Yes, don't forget my good evening, everyone. We have a number of things, very widely, very number of things to talk about tonight. And hopefully at some point we can talk about the rain on the roof that stand north of us so far. Certainly welcome all of you tonight. We will begin our meeting as is our custom with the pledge. And followed that will those of you who wish remain standing in prayer. We'll ask Ms. Tate if she can introduce the people leading the pledge tonight since I believe she knows these people.
So this is my oldest daughter, Mary Hunter, and my youngest Winnie and my husband Graham. And so I think Mary Hunter will lead us in the pledge.
Hi. The leaders of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, the day that you've given us and the life that you've given us and that we can enjoy, the beauty and everything that exists around us. We pray for our soldiers abroad that you have your hand of protection around them. We pray for our deputy chairs here and across the nation that you would have your hand of protection around them and our fireney and us workers that they join to help take care of the public. I pray that you will be with us here tonight and give us guidance in everything that we do. This we ask in your name, amen.
Okay, we have several public hearings tonight. The first is VDOT. Mr. Fitzpatrick, you want to introduce it? He doesn't need to, just come on, just wait on him.
Yes, sir. It's very good to see everybody this evening. We're, we're, boy, I'm telling you what, she looks just like you, Leslie. I mean, you all mirror each other. I tell you, I've got three daughters and they all look like their mama, thank God. Have, have liked to go over this evening. We've got a public hearing for our six-year plan. And I start off by saying when we used to do this five, six years ago, we had about, we had five or six million dollars a year. Now we have about one million to 1.4 million. And, and it's relegated back to like a gravel road plan where we hard surface existing gravel roads. And, and then the other, the bigger projects, they, they compete on our smart scale process where we asked for projects. Oh, we've been working on that. I think we got something tonight to talk about the ones that we have. They used to be the 600 numbers and above used to be all the secondaries. And we used to handle it all in this plan. And now, and we have a little more direction on some of those. But it opened up more money with the smart scale process. And, and but it also had to compete with the 250s and other world and, and a lot of the other primary and the big needs and Northern Virginia and everybody else who has more traffic, but their roads are not as important as ours, as y'all know. So tonight I have with me Josh Dunlap, my assistant. He's gonna probably, he's gonna go over this. And, and Will Clark, he's my contract administrator. He's kind of the author of these projects. He does the courthouse research and sends the letters and meets with the people and snakes the roads and then works it through. Because our money's less, we try to accomplish a lot of it, what we call state forced hired equipment. And that means it's our people that are doing the work. And we, and we hire out a company that'll bring us a backhoe or a dozer and, and work along with our people. And we do that to stretch the money as far as we can to do as many roads as we can. Before I turn it over to Josh, a couple of things that are important that he's gonna go through. I always like to reflect on what we do, what we've done in the recent past. You know, the projects that we've rebuilt and, 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 and because, you know, there's a lot of good projects out there. We can't forget what, what we've done. And then what are under construction now and, and where we're working now. And then the projects that are in the next, that are upcoming. And as I always tell y'all that this is your plan. We're kind of a conduit here for it. We listen to the people, we listen to you, and then we try and put the, put a plan together. And it's six years and I always say, because sometimes y'all change and there's sometimes people have different priorities. So we always say the first three years are really solid. That's why Will's already done a lot of work with them and we're moving forward to them. The next three are a little more liquid, you know? Where, where we could do, we could do some switching somewhat. But we try and stay with those first three years pretty, pretty, pretty solid. Now, our new program, it's been around for a while, but I still say it's our new program. I guess it'll be an old program at some point, Jennifer, but right now I still say it's new. We used to have to get 50 foot of right of way. So when we build a road, we had to get everybody on the road had to give right of way. And there was a lot of roads where you had maybe one or two that couldn't or, or, or just we had a house too close or something was, they just couldn't, we couldn't get it. And so we have a rural rustic program now that we could go with 30 foot, which is what we, we have now to maintain the roads. But we still need to get some easements and we need to get that road widened a little bit and improve the drainage because so many times the speed picks up once you hard surface a road. And when speed picks up, then you have a, you could have some head-on collisions. So we like to get at least 16 to 18 foot. The rules say 16 to 18. We like to get 18 foot as much as we can. And then we'll work with the property owners because, you know, the slopes, we want to leave them so they can mow them or that they're presentable. And so we'll lay them back and we'll, we'll, we'll meet with those people to do that. And that's what Will does for us. So I, I could stand, like I said, like y'all know, I could stand and talk about transportation for a long, long time because I, I, I enjoy that. I enjoy that in football. And we're not here to talk about football tonight or sports. So, and, and, and transportation, as I always say, it's, it's a vital part of growth in a county. And it affects everybody, you know? It's how we got here today. And so it's really important. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Josh and ask him to go over the plan.
Good to be here this evening and have the opportunity to present the secondary six-year plan. As Mr. Camaro said, there, that most of our bigger projects are now on the statewide six-year improvement program. There are a few in this plan that you'll see tonight at the beginning of the plan that are hanging on from before we kind of switched over to smart scale. Then we'll get into most of those rural rustic projects. This is the, the cover sheet that shows the funding for the next six year, six years. I don't think we won any creativity awards when we decided to call it the six-year plan. It is exactly that. This is the funding for the next six fiscal years. As you can see, we get right around a million dollars of unpaved road money and about $200,000 of telefee. Got a little bit more opportunity to do different things with that telefee money, but the, the money that's earmarked for unpaved roads has to be spent on those gravel road projects. We've got a couple of projects that have been complete for a couple of years. Just wanted to briefly go over them. Route 610 Howardsville Turnpike, just outside of Storage Draft there. This was a high-volume secondary road that we were able to widen and install curb and gutter to help control the drainage. We also were able to improve some site distance at a commercial entrance where we'd had some, had some crashes there. So that was a great project finished a few years ago. Route 616 Damtown Road there at Fort Defiance, another high-volume secondary road. We were able to get some right of way, get that road a little bit wider, a little bit better riding surface through there and help improve that road as well. Couple of projects that are on here that have not been constructed yet. This is the exit 235 Weers Cave Interchange. We've got some right turn lanes from Route 11 North onto the 81 Southbound On Ramp as well as 256 Westbound onto the 81 Northbound Ramp. This project's actually already been bid once. We did not get any bids back on it. So we're planning on putting it back out this fall. So hopefully we'll get some competitive bids and get this to construction next year. This is the dual left turn lanes at Mill Place Parkway. You see the two left turn lanes on Route 612 Westbound as well as a new receiving lane on Mill Place Parkway. Gonna have to modify some commercial entrances there at those two gas stations. We're also expanding the park and ride there in front of the food line. This is, we're getting close, I believe, to, to finalizing right of way and be able to get this to advertisement soon as well. One more of the bigger construction projects that shows up on the secondary six-year plan. This is the, the roundabout at Woodrow Wilson, our Wilson Workforce Rehab Center. The roundabout at the intersection of Hornet Road and Votek Road. That's the project that's actually on the secondary six-year plan. The picture on the right is another smart scale project that's on the statewide six-year plan. That is the extra lane into the complex as well as a, a new turn lane coming out of the complex. We're gonna advertise those two projects together. We're hoping to get that to construction by 2024. So that one's coming up pretty soon as well. Got a few pictures here of some, some of our rural rustic projects that have recently been completed. This is the oldest one that's still on the plan here. This was Mount Herman Road. This was almost a two-mile project. It was a very important for emergency services in that area coming back and forth there between Rockbridge County and southern end of Augusta County. We were able to complete this project back in 2020 and make those improvements. It was windy road through the, through the woods there, a lot of blind curves. We were able to widen that out, open that up and, and make that a much, much more passable road for those emergency services. Route 710 Mill Lane was completed last year since we met and, and discussed the plan last June. This was almost a mile. It's a connection between Route 252 and Sugarloaf Farms. Route 806 Boy Scout Road completed last year as well. This road was already kind of a wide road. They get a lot of traffic during, during special events for the Boy Scouts. We were able to work with them. A lot of the extras material that we have from that project, we were able to, to give to them. They were able to use it for some other projects that they had going on. It was a great partnership. They, they got a lot of use out of that as well and a, a good improvement to that road. Route 605 Fountain Cave Road. This was a little over, over a mile there on the, just south of Route 256. This is, they had several houses there. Another private road was a subdivision off of it. We were able to hard surface that road. This is be the, the first part of a project on Route 605. You'll see this road again here later in the plan. Route 842 Horseshoe Circle, another road we've completed since last time we met. Another about a mile road. This was a loop road off of Route 608 there beside Storage Draft. Most of that loop had already been paved. This allowed us to, to finish that off. Very high-volume road, a lot of houses back in there. Several private roads connect into it, a lot of houses back off of Horseshoe Circle. 675 Broadhead School Road, another road that was already kind of good and wide, allowed us to get in there. Hard surface almost two miles of that road, make a good, good connection through there. That was, I had a project that started back in the eighties or nineties and had never gotten finished. That allowed us to finish that off and get that road hard surfaced. Now we're gonna get into some roads that are under construction this summer. This is Route 766 Reeves Road. A lot of traffic on this road, a lot of houses close to the road. There's some turkey houses on this road, had some truck traffic, made it really difficult for us to maintain it. It was, it was in need of some repair and it was a good opportunity for us to get in there and hard surface this, so we're working on it. You can see we've already started laying some slopes back and widening that road out, get some ditches cut in there. And we'll be working on that through the summer. I think all, almost all of our drainage improvements are complete on that. And we'll get that hard surface this year. Route 652 Wilder Road. This is about a half a mile section from South River up to Indian Ridge Road. We had a pretty steep hill there. It gave us a lot of maintenance trouble through there, a lot of washing out, some damage to the local property, adjoining property owner there. So we've been able to widen that out, improve the drainage through there, get rid of some of that water before, before it makes that damage. And we'll get that hard surface this summer as well. Route 637 Jericho Road. This is about a mile-long section. The rest of Jericho is already paved. This is kind of a cut through from Route 250 over to Ramsey Road if you're headed towards Fisherville. The secondary access to Expo comes off of this. We've heard some stories here this year since we've kind of started cutting trees and put this project under construction. GPS routes you this way a lot. So it gets a lot of traffic, not just the folks that live out there. So this will be a good improvement to get this, this road hard surfaced. One more road under construction this summer is Pine Bluff Road. Route 784, just north of 612. We've made some great improvements out there already. Cut a lot of trees, widen that road out, improve site distance. The picture there on the right is, is 784 looking out towards the intersection of 612. If you've had to pull out from that intersection before, you know how, how bad the site distance is. We're gonna get that fence moved back, get that bank laid back and improve the site distance. If, even if we just did that, it would be a great project. But we're gonna go about a mile and hard surface Pine Bluff Road as well. We've got several roads under design for next year. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through these pretty quickly. We've got roads under design and then we'll get into some future year projects, years kind of three through five of the plan. Route 753 Nash Road from Route 910 to Route 613. That's, that's gonna be the second phase of Nash. Nash was completed a few years ago. And that'll allow us to, to complete that connection and hard surface that all the way through. Route 836 Green Hill Road. That's about a half a mile section of a road that, that'll allow us to get that paved all the way to the end. We don't have a turnaround there at this time. So we'll get to construct a turnaround for our guys to be able to turn around during snow removal and be able to maintain that road a little bit better. Route 688 Old Parkersburg Turnpike. This is from Route 689 to the National Forest. This has got a lot of traffic on it, a lot of houses on this section. It's gonna be kind of interesting working through the National Forest there. The National Forest Road comes off of, of this and, and, and some more houses back in there. So a lot of traffic on that road. That'll be a great improvement to get that road hard surfaced. Route 753 Slate Hill Road. This is another about a mile section. It's a narrow road, got a good bit of traffic on it. It's got a, a private road with a subdivision back in there, so a lot of houses. And it'd be great to get that widened out and hard surface. So all these roads are under design and to be constructed next year. Now we'll get into the future project. This is kind of years two through five of the plan, of the six-year plan. Route 782 Barnhart Road. This is a little over a mile section from Route 612 to Route 785. We've got Route 694 Stone Branch Road. That's another mile section, lots of traffic on there. It's kind of a cut through from Route 252 over towards Route 11. Route 605 Cave Hill Road from Route 865 to 770. This is a project that was, the first phase was completed last year. This is the second phase of that project, a couple of years out from now. And that'll allow us to pave that road all the way through. Route 843 Drainage Divide Lane. That goes from Route 607 to the dead end. We've got lots of maintenance issues out there. We've got a steep hill, several houses on that road. We want to be able to widen that out and improve the drainage on that road. Got Route 674 Pilson Road. That goes from 675 Broadhead School over to Wagon Shop Road. This comes off of Broadhead that we just completed last year. You saw some pictures of a few minutes ago. It's kind of a cut through over to Wagon Shop. It's a narrow road, got, got several houses on it. And we want to make that connection and, and kind of hard surface that corner of, of the area there. Route 817 Springlee Road from Route 701 to about a mile and a half north of there. There's a lot of houses, a lot of traffic on that road, some blind curves, a lot of trees to be cut through there. So we want to open that up and get that project completed. Route 614 Payne Run Road. That's from Route 615 to the dead end. There, there are a ton of houses on, on that road. We've got some major drainage concerns. We want to improve, improve that, enlarge some pipes and widen that road out. And a lot of those houses are very close to the road. So that'll be a great improvement to get that hard surfaced. Route 774 Klein River Road from 777 to Route 775. There are three roads up in that area that cross, cross Middle River. Route 775 to the north, we've got a, a bridge that's currently closed. It's been closed for a while, so we kind of lost that connection. Route to the south of that is Route 778. That bridge has a three-ton posting on it. We are working to get that bridge replaced. So that will be, that posting will be removed at some point in the future. But Route 774's got a new, a fairly new bridge across Middle River. So we felt like it'd be a great to, to add this to our east-west connectors across Middle River and get that hard surfaced. Route 743 Berry Lane from Route 612 to the dead end. There are a lot of houses on that road. It's pretty narrow for the amount of traffic that it gets. So we'd like to widen that out and get that road hard surfaced. Route 787 Old Mill Road. That's from 788 to 907. This is, these next two are two of the most recent roads that have been added to the plan. There's a lot of traffic on, on Old Mill. Several houses, a lot of them again are close to the road. We've got a steep hill there. We've got a lot of maintenance issues. So we'd like to improve the drainage coming down through there and make that a, make those improvements on Route 787. Route 652 Wilder Road. That's a road that we're actually is, the first phase of that's under construction right now, this summer. This is the remaining portion of that road. This end has a lot of houses, a lot of traffic on it. Got a little, a, a narrow section there in the middle kind of between our current project and this project that's gonna be difficult. But a lot of houses and a lot of traffic at the other end. So we want to get those two projects tied together. Just to kind of give you a, a summary of all those projects. I know that was a lot in a very short period of time. But we just talked about almost seven miles of recently completed projects. We've got 3.3 miles under construction this summer. We've got almost four miles under design for next year. And then about 15 miles of additional projects that we talked about for a total of 29.2 miles. Augusta County's got about 200 miles of gravel road currently. So that's a, that's 15% of our gravel roads that we're talking about. We've either just completed or, or have on our plan to complete in the next six years. So that's taking a chunk of those roads and, and trying to do something to make improvements with that mileage. We've got one more bigger project that is on the plan. This is Wayne Avenue Drainage Improvement Project. Anytime it rains really hard, we get a lot of water running down Wayne Avenue. We've got, we're working on trying to, to find, find a way to convey some of that drainage from the north side of Wayne Avenue down towards the big ditch that have been constructed along the railroad tracks. That was a, a second phase of a project that was completed probably 25 years ago that, that just never got built. So that's, that's been a need for a long time. And we're working on those design plans now and, and hope to get that to advertisement within the next year. There are a few countywide UPCs that show up on the secondary six-year plan. This gives us an opportunity to have a little bit of money set aside for some, some various tasks, engineering and survey, fertilization and seeding, traffic services, right-of-way engineering and traffic calming. So those are the, the projects on the secondary six-year plan for the county.
Are the Sanger's Lane improvements part of that?
Sanger's Lane, we've been handling with a little bit different kind of project. There's some safety money involved. We've spent some maintenance money out there trying to improve the drainage and so forth. So we had some other, other kinds of issues. We've been handling that a little bit differently. So, but nothing's changed with those plans. We're still, still moving forward. We've got another section that we're gonna address this summer. And so, so no changes with that, but it just does not show up on this plan.
All right, thanks.
King Dig Road. I noticed you got a counter on both ends of King Dig. What you got going on out there?
We are counting Ken Dig again. We did that a while back. We've had some complaints about trucks using that. So we wanted to kind of compare it and see if anything has changed. And we're also counting some truck traffic on several roads. We're kind of interested to see where those trucks are now and if there's any major changes once Amazon opens up there on, on Route 285. So it'll give us kind of a baseline to compare to. That a way in the future, we'll kind of know how, when folks call in, we'll be able to tell them whether it's truly increased or whether it, you know, has stayed the same. Yes, sir. I think we've got a little bit more work left out there, too.
Says a public hearing, if you wish to speak on a road, if you would come forward, give your name and your address and what road you'd like to speak about. We do not have anybody signed up to speak on a road. So if you... We do not have anybody signed up to speak on a road, so if you wish to do that, this is your opportunity. Yes?
Mr. Speaker, I don't want to speak on specific roads, but on the six-year plan in general. Tracy Powell's 3665 Churchville Avenue, Churchville, Virginia. I wasn't prepared for this. Uh, Mr. Kamora is as fine a engineer as we've had in the district, and he makes a lot of things happen with a little bit of money. But we shouldn't have so little money. We've done everything, the county did everything it could to be frugal and proactive in reducing the cost of roads. There was originally paved in place, and it wasn't good, and we initiated the Rural Rustic Road Program. And it's, I don't know, are they still using that for these programs?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Uh, and that is the bare minimum on a road. You don't take out curves, you don't do this, put down some hard service, and people are happy with it, they don't have it too much. So we've done our part. But when Mr. Kamora talked about the amount of money that's been reduced, you know, we were getting five or six million a year. Every district got nearly a million bucks, and if you put a little bit of your own money to it, the matching funds, you get some things done. But not only have they reduced it from five or six million to a million, the cost of a road is going up. You know, it costs a lot more money putting down even the least amount of road. So, we've cheapened our roads, the roads cost more, and our taxes went up. The taxes in the I-81 corridor went up. Now, as I recall, our reduction came when they were to take more of the money that we had been allocated to put the big projects where they get matching funds from the federal government. Okay, if I'm up at their level, I'm thinking, well, I get more done, I'm not thinking about the little guy. But, now that they've added, uh, taxes along 81 to do the big project, some money needs to come back to us from the other things. We can't be asked to do everything, that we're gonna fund the big projects, we're gonna lose the little projects, we take the least available roads. So, if this board wants to do something good, they'll hammer Mr. Hanger and our other delegates and the governor to pick that up some, get us back to where we were. They all talk about wanna do things for rural Virginia. Well, rural roads are in rural Virginia. Make the case to get us more money, we deserve it. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing.
Yes, sir. I just wanna say, um, well, we, we're gonna do what we can with the money we got, just like, um, on, on, on the plan. If we put those things out to contract, those things, 29 miles, that'd be about, uh, 18, about 15, 16 thou- million dollars. We're, 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 we get it for about seven. So it tells you what, but, but by doing what, what Josh and what, 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 what Will's doing out there. So, so we're doing the best we can. Uh, wasn't here yesterday. Remind y'all, um, improve81.org if you wanna know what's going on, um, on the interstate. We're getting a lot of work on the interstate. Next week, we have a public hearing for the, for the piece through, um, through Harrisonburg from 242 to 248. We had a public hearing last month on the piece through Stanton from, um, 221 to 225, and we're going to design build on that. And we're looking at hiring somebody this fall for that design build. We're, we're negotiating right away. And, um, not a lot of that, a lot of utility relocations, um, on, on that. And Barterbrook Road, hey, that's a big piece where you go, and I tell y'all, we got a little bit of audience, so I'll, I'll take this minute. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for indulging me. As you go west on, as you were, you go west on 64 and you go south on 81, you know, the merge lanes real, we're gonna take two lanes through there, and it has to, we've got a widened Barterbrook Road Bridge, um, move that pier in order to, to, to make that, that change. Big improvement. We've, we've got a lot of complaints about people getting together right, right there. So that's coming up next fall. We, next year at this time, I would hope that that's gonna be under construction, right, Joshua? And, and, and so, we're, we're getting some work on the interstate and, and trying to move that along. So I just wanna leave that with you, a positive note. If, i- if y'all have concerns or stuff outside of this, you know where to reach us, and we're glad to, glad to help you. And, um, and transportation's important, and I'm glad y'all put that, um, up front. So thank you, sir, and ma'am.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if there's no, uh, changes to the plan, it does require the board to take action on approval of the six-year plan and the budget for fiscal year '22 and '23.
Is there a motion?
Shall move?
Any other questions? Seven of them. Okay. We have several rezonings tonight. Ms. Tate will introduce the first one.
Okay, um, if I could get the slides up, please. Um, so the first rezoning request we have is a request to rezone from single-family residential 15 to general agriculture approximately 3.8 acres. It's tax map parcel 6689. It's owned by Dylan and Erica Sipe. It's located east of Troxel Lane and Jefferson Highway in Stanton in the Beverly Manor District. The property is located in an urban service area of the comprehensive plan, planned for future medium-density residential development at a density of three to four dwelling units per acre. And the proposed general use of the property is residential lots on agriculture-zoned property. So as we discussed on Monday in the staff report...
Tuesday. Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, you're right. Um, that the planning commission did hold a public hearing, and they do recommend denial of the request. If, can you do the, um, from the presentation view, so I can go to the maps? There we go. So you'll notice that everything in green is zoned single-family and has been since 1948, other than the parcel to the west that was zoned in 2018. The adjacent yellow color represents multifamily zoning and existing development that was done in 2011. And then the blue color is general agriculture zoning that was done in 91 and 94, so likely at that point, it was zoned single-family and was rezoned back to agriculture, you know, potentially for the creation of lots. Um, so this 3.8 existing acres that's outlined in red, the reason that the applicant would like to rezone it back to agriculture is actually to create two buildable lots. They're building a home on the property now and would like to divide it to create another buildable lot. Um, in single-family zoning, you can't create new lots on, unless it has frontage on a public road, and Troxel Lane is not a public road. Um, you also can't create lots in general agriculture unless it's on a public road, unless you utilize the family member exception. So the applicant has identified that they do plan to, um, build a home, divide the lot if it was rezoned back to agriculture, and indeed that lot to a family member. The family member would have to hold, um, that lot for three years before they, um, could sell the property. This is the comp plan designation for the area. The brown represents multifamily planned residential development. And then all the orange that you see is representative of, um, the comp plan's medium-density residential development. So single-family homes at a density of three to four units an acre. And as we talked about at our staff briefing, that's really, you know, with a county as large as, as ours, 976 square miles, with the comp plan, you really are kind of broad brushing areas with colors representing potential compatible development. But it's very hard to take a really fine-tuned look at all the specific areas that may or may not be compatible, um, or have the necessary infrastructure for development. So while public water and sewer is available to this property, Troxel Lane, um, is not really conducive, as you can see from this picture, and then from the comments that VDOT provided, um, for, you know, kind of a, a lot more dense development. And so this is Troxel Lane that comes right out on, um, to Route 250. So the planning commission held their public hearing, and they do recommend, um, denial of the request. And I don't see the applicant here. So usually typically the applicant would come and speak, um, but I don't see them here. They were here at the planning commission meeting. I guess we can go ahead and open the public hearing? Okay.
I do have, I do have a couple signed up. Okay, this is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. We have several people that have signed up.
Yeah, I've got two signed up. Uh, first would be Kelly Troxel.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Troxel, and I live at 118 Troxel Lane, Stanton. I have resided with my family on Troxel Lane for the past 15 years. I come to you this evening as a concerned homeowner, neighbor, and parent regarding this rezoning request. Troxel Lane actually started out as a gravel road for several families who did not desire to build homes in a subdivision. It was then and is still a private road with no state maintenance nor any formal road agreement among the homeowners. The maintenance on the wear and tear of the road has traditionally fallen on the original families. Naturally, the condition of the road is impacted each time equipment trucks and crews come in to construct a new home, and then of course afterwards, when the new homeowners and their guests travel on it. While the condition of the road is a serious consideration, our greater concern is for the safety of those who live on the road. It has become increasingly difficult to get off of Route 250 and onto Troxel Lane safely because of the traffic coming out. This is dangerous, and we fear that someone is going to be involved in an accident on Route 250 as a result. Widening the entrance and the road is just not a viable solution. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening, to preserve property and to help protect my family and our neighbors. I respectfully ask that you deny this rezoning request as recommended by the planning commission. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Haskins.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Haskins, and I reside at 122 Troxel Lane. I would like to request denial of the request to rezone the property on Troxel Lane from single-family to general agriculture, and I would like to thank the Augusta County Planning staff for their thoughtful consideration and recommendation on this request as well. The road leading to, to all houses on Troxel Lane is a single-private lane road that's maintained by residents, not VDOT, and does not meet, um, the secondary street acceptance requirements. The responsibility for maintenance and safety remains with residents who must work together. Here are a few examples. When there's incoming traffic, the only way to manage is to pull over, often in another residence driveway or in the grass. Caution on the road is very important, as we have several children living in the neighborhood who can often be found riding bikes on the road. The road is perpendicular to Route 250, so the only way in and out is through the highway. Again, in turning in and out of the road with no stoplight or turning lane, safety is a concern. Increased traffic is not beneficial for the safety of this community. In 2017, five neighbors joined together to pave a portion of the road that was gravel at the time. This involved everyone agreeing on the service and contributed fairly to a distributed bill. The remainder of the road, including areas along the requested rezoning, are in need of additional maintenance. Construction of homes leads to further decline in road conditions, and the more traffic, the more wear on existing conditions. Bringing additional people into the mix further complicates the number of people required to bring consensus to funding this project. Routinely, several of us trim fence rows and brush along the roadside, so it does not interfere with traffic. Cleaning the road is a community responsibility. Our neighbors used a tractor and snowplow, and we've assisted with a snow blower, just to name a few examples. Um, when accidents occur, such as the fall of a tree that just recently happened at our neighbor's home, residents clear the tree, including any portion on the road. For mail service, one of our neighbors has taken the initiative creating mailbox, mailpost and boxes for all the residents. This was recently rebuilt and includes the current number of houses, including the one that's being built by the current owners requesting rezoning. The current Sipes residence that is in process of being built is zoned single-family residential, which is the intended use, as opposed to general agriculture as defined by the Augusta County Code. And we will work together alongside the new neighbors for continued maintenance and safety. However, the community cannot sustain continued expansion of residents and homes that would occur with the rezoning. We appreciate your consideration of the broader community impact for this neighborhood, and thank you so much for your time and your commitment to the county.
Okay, that's all we have signed up. Anyone else wish to speak on this rezoning? Now we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Wells?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I, um, of course, the past couple of days, I've received two phone calls and an email. The email was from Ms. Haskins. And in reviewing the staff report, I noticed where VDOT has a concern about the width of Troxel Lane, being able to handle the traffic. And in reviewing the staff report, also, uh, staff recommends, um, not to approve the request for, uh, at least five reasons. Plus the fact that the planning commission has denied the request. I'd make a motion that this rezoning request be denied.
So, I'd like to have us take a, um, a roll call on this to clarify how this vote came out, because it's, I think we're getting mixed up because our motion was made as a negative, and so it's maybe confusing to some of us. So if we could have a roll call, uh, that would allow us to say, um, uh, agree with the planning commission or against the planning commission, uh, I think that would help clarify this.
I think this would, this would prove that you're likely right. Okay, we will, uh...
Thank you, I too.
...agree with his motion, which is to deny.
If, uh, you would raise your right hand to agree to deny. Okay, seven of them. Good call. That's, I was sitting there trying to do the math on that. Okay. Ms. Tate?
Okay, the next, um, if we can get the slides back up, please. The next rezoning request is, um, a request to rezone from general business to general agriculture, approximately .26 acres of a total .46 acre property. It's tax map parcel 20A345. It's owned by Gold Shop Incorporated, and it's located at 33 Depot Road in Weir's Cave in the Middle River District. The property is located in an urban service area of the comprehensive plan. It's planned for future business development. The proposed general use of the property is a residence on agriculture-zoned property. Um, so you can see the aerial here, and the parcel is outlined in red. As noted as, at our staff briefing, the parcel outline has been corrected to reflect the true, um, boundary of the property, which brings it over closer to the post office that's at this location. So it is a portion, um, if I go to the next slide, you'll see that is split zone, so a portion that is already zoned business, and then the portion with the existing, um, building is zoned, um, general business. Um, you can see this is the comprehensive plan, future land use map, and it identifies the area for future business development. Although, as we discussed at our staff briefing, um, there is an adjacent post office on general agriculture zoning, um, to the south of the property. There's residential development on general agriculture zoning. And then actually directly to the north, um, of the property is a house, um, currently used as a dwelling but is zoned general business, so a legal non-conforming use. I did include, uh, this street view, so you can see the post office off to the right of the image. Um, the, um, structure that we're talking about is, what is identified here is Weir's Cave Bank, and then to the left, you can see the existing home on, um, general business-zoned property. So the property is currently split-zoned, general agriculture and general business. This property was used for a business at some point, and because it was used as a business, it, it, under the general business zoning, it can't be converted, um, to a residential use. So the applicant is requesting to rezone back to general agriculture in order to, um, convert this business, um, dwelling into a single-family residence. Um, the planning commission did hold their public hearing. Um, no speakers were present at the planning commission's public hearing, um, and the planning commission does rec... and the Planning Commission does recommend approval of the rezoning request. And the applicant is here to speak to the request.
Does the applicant wish to speak?
Christopher Semenetti. I live at 129 Seeright Road, and I just wanted to thank Ms. Tate and the board for, um, even bringing this to consideration. And also like to thank the board for taking your time to, to, uh, think about this rezoning. If you have any questions, I can answer them while I'm here. Okay.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wish to speak for or against the rezoning? Hearing none, close of public hearing. Mr. Wells, my district, I would favor this if you'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the rezoning request.
So, I have just one question, sorry. So this is going to GA, and then it could be used as a business in the future if Mr. Semenetti moves out? It could still be used as that?
Yeah, so general agriculture does give the property kind of the most flexibility in terms of potential uses. The only thing you can do by right on agriculture-zoned property is a residence or farming. But certainly, the, the size of this property would kind of preclude any, any kind of large farming operation. But yes, there are lots of options that could be done by special use permit. So if they did want to convert it back to some kind of business use in the future, with the agriculture zoning, they would be able to apply for a special use permit and have that public hearing process to identify whether that use was compatible with the surrounding area.
And I would just like our, um, when we go through the comprehensive plan, that a note is made on this that we keep at the GA, because it's a beautiful historic building. And I think we want to have flexibility, keep it active, and keep people in it and using it.
That is the end of public hearings. Ms. Tate, smart scale.
Okay, um, so tonight you have, um, four smart scale resolutions before you. Um, and so these are resolutions of support. As was discussed with the six-year plan earlier, I believe this is round five of smart scale, and this is the way that the county can apply for 100%, so no match dollars related to transportation projects in our area. We are limited to the number of applications we can submit, and it is a competitive statewide process. So the resolutions of support that we're asking for this evening, if I can get the slides back up, I just have sketches of the projects to familiarize yourself with those. So the first is the Interstate 64 and US 250 Exit 99 Intersection Improvement Project. So this is a high potential-for-safety-improvement intersection. This was the original sketch that was provided with the pre-application, but as noted at your staff briefing yesterday, based on some cost concerns with the extended medians, this is kind of just a rough sketch showing that the majority of it would actually be done through pavement markings, kind of eliminating some of the medians to grab that cost down. It would still have a very high safety benefit, so our hope with that is that it would score well with the smart scale applications. And the Stanton-Augusta-Wainsboro Metropolitan Planning Organization would actually be submitting this project, but it does require a board resolution of support. The next project is the Route 256 I-81 Interchange Three-Lane Bridge Improvement Project. So this is a recommendation that came out of the recent small-area study at this location. This is, uh, will be a project that will be put in by Augusta County staff. And so this is an additional turn lane, left turn lanes on, on the bridge to reduce congestion and, and safety at that location. The third resolution of support this evening is for the Woodger Wilson Workforce and Rehabilitation Center. It's the long-term improvement project, so, um, as was noted earlier, you know, the roundabout within the complex and the additional turn lanes in and out of the complex are already funded, and, and we refer to those as the short-term improvement project. And the long-term improvement project is a secondary access, so another way of getting in and out, bringing another access out to 250 and up with, into the center. And that will also be put in by the Stanton-Augusta-Wainsboro Metropolitan Planning Organization. And then the last resolution for your consideration this evening is actually a resolution that the City of Wainsborough will be submitting, but a portion of the Croze Tunnel Trail that you can see in red would be expanding into Augusta County. And so because it's kind of a regional project, they are requesting a resolution of support from the county. So all of those were in your packets. The language is included in your packets. And then we, once we have those approved resolutions, we'll be putting them in the final applications, which are due in August.
Okay, any questions?
I'd like to make a motion without objection to include all four of these projects into the same motion to approve them.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Ready to vote? Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald, Animal Shelter MOU.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, before I jump into the Animal Shelter memorandum of understanding, and I'm gonna take a point of privilege to, uh, embarrass Ms. Tate a little bit before she sneaks out here after her business is done here tonight, but I just want to publicly recognize Leslie for her work with Augusta County. This is Leslie's last meeting with us at Augusta County. She's moving to the City of Wainsborough to be their Director of Community Development, and, uh, she will do a magnificent job in Wainsborough, there is no doubt in my mind. Uh, our loss is Wainsborough's gain, but I did want to, uh, to publicly thank Leslie for over five years of her work to the citizens of Augusta County, for her work as a leader in community development. She's been steady ever since she walked in the door in community development. She's been a rock for us. And I wrote down a few projects that she worked on, and I would first say solar, 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 and solar, Leslie. I know you got tired of hearing about solar, but Leslie was a key player in our solar ordinance and dealing with solar requests that we had along the way. Sturstraft Small Area Plan was one of the first projects that Leslie took on when she was here. Uh, she went to have a baby in the middle of that, and came back and finished the Sturstraft Small Area Plan, along with a comp plan update with that, which is a, which was a great plan, the second small area plan we've got in the county. Multiple comp plan updates, as you can imagine, going forward. Multiple ordinance changes. It seemed like every month we had a different ordinance that come about. Uh, her work with the ordinance committee has been great and, and solid, and so her recommendations to the board have always been, uh, been spot-on from a planning perspective. Uh, and then finally, a major milestone that we get to do once every ten years, and that's redistricting in Augusta County. Leslie was our lead, uh, in, on redistricting. Worked through that process, working with the public, made that process very simple. And we thank her for that, and that is to be congratulated. So I just want to take a minute to, uh, again, publicly thank her for her service to Augusta County and to community development. Wainsborough is getting a superstar, and we thank her for her work with the county. So thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It has certainly been my honor to serve the citizens of Augusta County, and I'm looking forward to still working, you know, for our region, so thank you.
We threatened to nail her office chair to the floor and tire in the chair, but we figured her family would miss her after a day or two, so we figured that wouldn't work.
That's right. Yeah, I'll deal with Mike Hamp later. Now we'll go on to Animal Shelter. So before you tonight is an updated memorandum of understanding for our animal shelter in Lynnhurst. As the board knows, we are working through a new fiscal agent process that will come into effect July the first. Augusta County will be, be taken over as the fiscal agent of, of the shelter. All those employees there will be transitioning to Augusta County, along with, uh, requirements there for the financial, the human resources, maintenance of the real estate, and so forth. There were some minor changes made to the agreement. The original agreement was 2011, so there were some changes made throughout the agreement, not major, but specifically in regards to fiscal agent, also in regards to some duties of the shelter director. So it is before you tonight for consideration of the approval of the memorandum of understanding. The City of Wainsborough approved it this week, and the City of Stanton will have it on their agenda for tomorrow night for consideration as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to motion to approve the MOU for the Animal Shelter.
I second it.
Any other questions or discussion? Ready to vote? Just like to say, that's certainly been a big topic over the last year or so. I think there's a lot of improvement been made, uh, and I think there will be some additional improvements that you'll see in the very near future.
All right, next on the agenda is a request that we talked about yesterday in regards to, uh, funding for ballfield improvements at the Old Verona Elementary School. These are the fields that the BCA uses there. They had asked for consideration of some funding to replace the dirt on the infield there. Went through our Parks and Rec Commission and received a recommendation of approval from them. So it's before the board tonight to consider the donation of, um, $2,907.50 to take care of that dirt on the infield. Ms. West, I gave the wrong number.
Is it 232745? Divided three ways would be $775.82.
Eighty-two each district.
Right, each district, yeah.
That's correct.
Since this is in North River, the property's in North River District, I would like to thank Mr. Wells, Mr. Garber for helping to, to split this up amongst the citizens we serve here and make a motion to move forward with the funding request, please.
I second.
Any other questions or discussion? Ready to vote? Ms. Watson, you're up.
So the board, um, discussed on Mon, or Tuesday, the general reassessment, RFP, and proposals that were received. We did receive two proposals. The committee met last Wednesday, conducted interviews with both companies. And the selection committee has, um, decided to award the contract to Wampler Eens Appraisal Group out of Daleville, Virginia. If the board moves forward with approving this tonight, a notice of intent will be sent out tomorrow to the, notify the companies, and then we'll start working on a contract for work to begin around the middle of September to certify our 1124 book, which would be a five-year reassessment, um, in sometime in March of 2024. So it's before the board for consideration to award this contract.
Mr. Chairman? The, uh, reassessment committee met two applicants, um, and we interviewed them, had the two applicants. One was a little cheaper. However, I, um, I know for myself, I felt more comfortable with, uh, the one, Wampler Eens, that can meet our expectations, meet our deadlines that we need to have. So, um, I moved that we approve the contract for Wampler Eens.
Mr. Chairman, I was the second member of the committee, and I would second that motion.
Just a, uh, question for the committee. What were the aspects that made you feel better about this particular group than the other one? I know you shared those in our staff meeting, but if you could share those again, please.
The two groups seem to be very knowledgeable, uh, and I had doubts about meeting our deadline to be able to, um, have the taxes, tax rate set, uh, in, in time for the 2024 taxes. That was probably my biggest concern. The other one was kind of a, I had more concerns if they could meet that deadline.
One of the biggest concerns that I had was the, um, the one vendor couldn't post a bond or didn't want to post a bond, uh, and, uh, he also advised us he couldn't guarantee us that certain parts of the job would get done, so that raised a whole bunch of red flags for me.
Okay, you ready to vote?
Could you tell us how much the contract's for?
It's $1,548,944.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have two infrastructure requests on your agenda tonight. The first request is from the Wayne Infrastructure account, and this is a request to do some stormwater improvements off of Kensington Drive. Uh, it'd be, it would be to replace or actually extend a concrete channel from a previous project that we had completed several years ago down to a common area right behind Kensington, Kensington Drive and the Teverton subdivision. The amount estimated for this project is $4,105, and Dr. Seaton is requesting funding from his infrastructure account to fund this project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve this. I've walked that area. Right now, we have stormwater that's, uh, kind of being delivered onto, uh, this individual's land. It's, has rock around it, but it's, there's a lot of snakes and things. The water's going to be delivered to a stream that's already there, so it's, and it's part of the Homeowners Association there. So it's, we're not redirecting the water to, um, an unknown channel. That channel already exists to take that water off the, the Homeowners Association area there. So this hopefully will, uh, reduce, um, problems with, uh, certain wildlife that might be a little more scary to some individuals, like snakes and things like that, that have been collecting in that area.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Ready to vote?
Thank you.
Okay, the second one is a request for Mr. Morelli for $3,975 from a South River Infrastructure account. Uh, this would be, uh, to do some work on a drainage easement that's located at 210 Draft Avenue in Sturstraft. Uh, we've had ongoing issues there with standing water. The easement, uh, has grown up and, and not been maintained. Uh, so the quote to, um, install a swell in that area and to get that easement, uh, in, back in good shape, along with reseeding and straw, uh, the disturbed area. along with reseeding and straw, the disturbed areas, was $3,975. Mr. Morelli would request that we fund this project from the South River Infrastructure account.
And thank you for saying that, saved me from saying it. I'd like to make a motion to approve $3,975 for my infrastructure to improvements of 210 Draft Avenue.
Second. Second, any questions? Ready to vote? I do have a request from a board member to take a break. I didn't ask why, that'd be rude, so we'll take a five-minute break. We'll be back in session at 8:15. Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Next on your agenda is a discussion of donation accounts. I do have, at the request of the sheriff, Sheriff Smith, here to speak to this issue tonight first.
Good evening. Just like to start by saying it's been a long road for these dash cameras and body cameras, and we started talking about the needs of the sheriff's office back in May of 2021. And I hope tonight that I can help get the animosity of this board and what I believe and what I see, the needs of the county as far as the law enforcement perspective goes. At that time, I spoke to you all about the need for a digital radio system, police vehicles, better wages for the deputies, dispatchers, and the support staff of the sheriff's office and additional deputies. Since I've been sheriff, I've referenced dash cameras in county budget as well as the compensation budget. And I've stood in front of you all in different meetings, many meetings, and spoke to you about what I think the needs are. I've also been very blunt about the need for additional deputies, and I told you less than two months ago that if you give me $3 million, I would put them towards more deputies. And I held a body camera up here, and I said that body cameras did not shut down the shooter at Bridgewater. And then Texas happened. So, I can tell you, last month, I sat in the emergency services committee meeting. Dr. Seaton, you do pretty good at quoting me, writing things, the sheriff said this and said that about body cameras. But what you didn't bring back to this board was, I spoke about the need to improve the conditions. Mr. Shaw got it. He sat right there, and I saw him go to work immediately with a pencil, trying to figure out how he could make my request happen without going up on taxes. And what I requested was to take $100,000 of that contingency money that you all had and throw it at their salaries and get their salaries out of the $30,000 range and improve the dispatcher's conditions. I applaud this board for extending our dispatch center and the work that you all are putting in there. But I have a deputy that I've pulled off the road, and I've put in ECC to help with the issues that we have down there. We are not going to be able to address those issues until we get the funding in ECC up and we pay those people what they're worth. We're asking them to work nights, weekends, and holidays. That dispatch center is the hub to everything in Augusta County, and without them, law enforcement, fire and rescue, everything collapses. That didn't make it back to this board. If, I'm going to do a needs assessment for you. My number-one priority right now is ECC and going and trying to get their wages up and get more people in chairs downstairs. That is my number-one priority. I said it in the emergency services meeting. We have to deal with that. We are all going to fall on our face if we don't fix that issue. They're working hard as they can work, but we don't have enough staff down there, and we've got to fix that. Number two. My phone rings off the hook from the majority. I listen to the people of this county. I'm not hooked to a political party. Every time I've run, I've said I'm going to listen to the people. The people in this county are very direct and straight to the point. My phone since Texas has rang off the hook, wanting to know about school resource officers and how I'm going to protect people's kids and grandkids in county schools with the number of deputies that I have. SROs is number two. Number three, the digital radio system. We've referenced the digital radio system about how much work we've put into it. There's RFPs out. We've looked at the downfalls of our radio system. I've talked for years about how we need to get the radio system improved. Mr. Shaw's gone and looked at other radio systems in the area. We've talked about that, but we haven't paid for it. We've got a heavy, heavy lift there. Vehicles. I have 44 vehicles in the Augusta County fleet that have over 100,000 miles on them. I've got to be able to get the deputies to the calls. I've tried to get more reserve deputies and bring reserves in. Some of the older reserves that have been around a while, we have put them through driving, and I'm able to get them out, but I don't have cars to put them in. Better wages for the Augusta County Sheriff's Office family. We did a heavy lift this year, but I made it very, very clear when I built this year's budget. The first thing that I'm going to come back on next year is to improve those wages, improve the compression pay issue that we've had for years that that you all didn't cause that. The State Compensation Board caused that. But it's cost us a lot of groin pains and a lot of deputies that's happened. So, that's going to be an additional thing that I come out, right out the gate come November, when we start on the budget for next year. Additional deputies. I need more deputies. I need to make sure that my deputies go home to their families. Over the past month, I've had four major incidents at Augusta Health where people are trying to overpower my deputies. I had a guy just the other day beat up four security guards before my deputy could get there. My deputy goes there by himself. We need more deputies. You've heard me say time and time again in meetings in front of you all that Augusta Health and the lack of mental health services in the state of Virginia, both for adults and juveniles, is single-handedly shutting down the sheriff's office. At any time, you can go over to Augusta Health, and there's four, five, six deputies sitting over there in the ER. When I put four deputies at the ER, I've got two or three men out on the road answering calls with no backup. As I go through this, it's going to get harder and harder because my fan club over here speaks about how racist I am. I want to talk to you about the diversity of the sheriff's office. I have 92 employees. Thirteen are women. Three of them wear a badge and gun every day. Nine are staff. One's part-time. I have four African-American deputies. Three of them are supervisors. I have one Asian, one Hispanic. My entire career under, except for the last three years, I spent my entire career with Gary Taylor. Gary Taylor was the first African-American lieutenant. He was the first African-American that was ever put in the command staff of the sheriff's office. I have the first woman that's ever been in the command staff of the sheriff's office. Yet, they stand up, they call me racist. They accuse the deputies of gunning down black people in the streets. They demand body cameras and dash cameras. They come in here over the past few months, and they have made their claim to these body cameras and their donations. They have made their claim in my name, supporting me. Their protest, their paid protest- Their protest, their paid protest, it didn't support me. They stood outside of my office for over six months screaming, "F the police. F you. F you, Donald Smith." Screaming on bullhorns for over six months. They charged my deputies every time they came out of the office. Yet now they stand here and they tell you, "We need this for our deputies." I can tell you, they don't care about my deputies. They don't care about me. I have 12 lawsuits. Twelve lawsuits. I've been sued for being a homophobe. I've been sued for seizure of cell phones, shooting a dog, being racist, chilling their speech. And the last thing, Fourth Amendment violation. These are paid people pushing an agenda. This is not the silent majority of Augusta County. This is not the people that elected you and me to keep this county safe. They've put out countless flyers saying that I lied to a federal judge, called me a human trafficker, called me a pedophile. They've gone after my family. They stood outside of my parents' home. They followed me around. They've flown drones over my parents' home. They've flown drones over my house. They put out false information for a solid year that I was going to be federally indicted. Yet here I stand. They placed a sign outside the sheriff's office with a tracking device saying that I was a pedophile. They put billboards throughout the county for a solid year trying to absolutely crucify my character. Yet the people of this county that have known me my whole life, they stood behind me. And they elected me to do a job, keep this county safe. They follow my deputies home where their families are inside, their kids are inside. They stand outside the sheriff's office and they scream, "F the police," and then they follow my deputies home. They come in here, they talk about praying before they leave their home. They talk about how scared they are of my deputies, how scared they are of me. I can tell you, they say they're afraid. They're not afraid. If you're afraid of somebody, you don't go at them. You don't charge them. You don't scream, "F you" at them. Take that badge off. You don't do what they do. This isn't about body cameras. It isn't about dash cameras. But you follow one of my deputies home to his house where you're driving, gets the attention of my deputy after he gets outside of his vehicle. And then you claim that we are stopping you in bad faith when law enforcement officers are getting gunned down all over the country. I can assure you, regardless of what they say, they don't care about the deputies. Scott Klein, I'm glad you're in the room. I hope you're still here. For a solid year, you've talked about me lying to a judge. You've talked about, to the constituents, about me being federally indicted. You were instrumental in the pedophile and the tracking device and the camera that went in front of my office. Yet there was a suggestion that came from this board to form a committee for these body cameras, and your name came up. I'm not interested in sitting on a board with you. You've told board members and you've told people in this community that I can fund these body cameras for around 185,000. 185,000 won't cover the personnel costs that the state guidelines say the Commonwealth Attorney's Office has to have. So I don't know where you're getting your figures, but they're wrong. Mr. Seaton, you called the vendor and you asked them how many patrolmen that I had on patrol. You didn't call me. That's where your quote-unquote, "I said I can get by with 50 cameras," that came from that. So I'd like to talk about the donations account for just a minute. I have become the face of this donation account. I have become the face of Nexus's GoFundMe page. I've become the face of the petition that says the board does not support the sheriff's office. It concerns me and it should concern every one of you. I have absolutely no desire to take one penny from Nexus, Black Lives Matter, their protesters or whatever name they choose to come after or use. I have no, I have no desire to sit in the same room with Richard Moore, Mike Donovan, Scott Klein. I have no use for any of it. If I lied to a federal judge, I wouldn't be standing in front of you today. They carve out what they want to, what they want to push, but they don't carve out where the judge said, "You might not like what he said, but you didn't impeach his incredibility." My credibility's still intact. I've become the face of this. Like I said, I have no desire to take one penny from these people. None. This is a taxpayer issue. It requires sustainability, not a donations account. I stood right here and I told you, if we go down this road, we can't back up. If we go down this road, we need to keep on continuing on. If we put this in place, we need to do this the right way. We can't put a body camera. We can't put these cameras in the windshield. We have too many traffic stops. We have too many encounters. We need an infrastructure to push the information to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, to push the information in the courts. We cannot take a system and just stick it in the windshield and haphazardly. We do not have the time nor the manpower to upload every little thing into a report. You have to have the infrastructure behind it. I'm not fabricating the numbers. The numbers are coming from the vendors. I feel like this body camera and dash camera thing has taken a total control of this board. And that's all you all talk about. I'm asking you to open your eyes. We have a lot of issues in front of us. We have a lot of things that we need to do. If you want to support the Augusta County Sheriff's Office, you want to support me, you want to support the men and women that keep this county safe, put your hand in the air and close this account. And when we can fund this the right way and do it the right way, the taxpayer issue. I want body cameras more than anybody. But I can't stand in front of you and make it my number one priority when the citizens of this county are asking me how I'm going to keep their children safe. Moving forward, we have an obligation, all of us, like me, don't like me, doesn't matter. We have an obligation to keep this county safe, not just argue over body cameras and how we're going to make it happen. Moving forward, I hope that you will take a look at these wages for our dispatchers and keep the hub that keeps all of us running day to day. The additional deputies, I needed them yesterday. When I come in November, I need you to continue to support better wages, better retirement, and be committed to helping me fix the compression pay issue to ensure that we have a strong workforce to keep Augusta County safe. We need to continue to fix this radio system and find a way to fund it. We haven't paid for it. We've got to fund that. Vehicles, we still need to fix vehicles and work on vehicles. I've talked to you all about Major Jenkins. Major Jenkins is getting ready to retire in two years. I've got to have the ability for the last three budget cycles, I put in there for an evidence room sergeant. I have a limited amount of time to harness Major Jenkins' knowledge of that evidence room. I inherited an evidence room under a state police investigation, and since my whole first term, not one single piece of evidence was destroyed. We were busting at the seams and we were at over 12,000 pieces of evidence. And we were able to cut it over the last year and a half to 5,122 items. And I've asked for a training position over and over, and we've had to cut it. Yet we get hung up over and over on the body cameras. I want a body camera as much as anybody else does, but like I told you, standing in this room less than two months ago, I can't dispatch a body camera to a school. I can't dispatch them to make sure that my deputies come home. I took a complaint today over a 30-minute response time that I can't do anything about. I'm going to go down a real touchy subject real quick. I'm going to talk about Mr. Bruce. Mr. Bruce is the man that we shot in Kamora. We shot him on May 14th of 2021. I was there. I saw the look on my deputy's face. I'm the one that went and told Mr. Bruce's mom that he wasn't coming home. They stand up and tell you, "We're gunning down black men in the street." Mr. Bruce is a 48-year-old white male. He's a white male. On May 19th, we did shoot a 31-year-old black male. We shot him for wheeling a gun around. We did not shoot him because of the color of his skin. Up until those shootings that we had that absolutely ripped our agency apart, because nobody thought it would happen here. Law enforcement in Augusta County hadn't shot anybody since 1941, when the sheriff's office and Stanton PD went after somebody. So I'm asking you, as I've become the face of all these accounts, and I've become the face of Nexus's GoFundMe, close it. We're not going to fund this program on a donation account, regardless of what the public eye is. Refund the money and close the account and help me move forward and listen to what I'm telling you, because we have a lot of work to do. We've got, I've got to have you to do it. I can't fix the salaries in ECC. When I come to you and ask you to make sure that my deputies have a better retirement and a better wage, I can't do it without you. And I think that the direction that we've gone in, and I think that body cameras and dash cameras are very important. I have a radio system that my deputies can't even call for help on. And I understand that we're working, but we ain't got it done yet. So I ask you all to right this ship, pull back together and realize that we've got to work, we've got to work together. I'm not asking you to like me. I'm not asking you to buy in. I am asking you to come together to keep the citizens of the county safe and keep my deputies safe and make sure they go home to their families. When I ran for sheriff, I knew that I would be in the headlines. I knew that I would be attacked. But this bunch following my deputies home and doing what they do to my deputies is absolutely uncalled for. This is not the majority of the county. And I hope that you'll work with me, not against me, and close this and fix the issue. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to... Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to rescind a vote taken at our board meeting establishing the budget account and to accept a donation for the purchase of body cameras for the sheriff's office until mandated by the state.
Second. So I think that's a motion that is not a correct motion. The account was already created, so rescinding applies to things that haven't been done yet. So a motion to rescind applies to unexecuted parts. The account was created. Money is already in the account. People have already raised money and have deposited in the account. So this is not the correct motion. I object to the motion based on that.
Well, these are rules, first of all, in terms of legal, it's really not a legal question. These are rules of procedure that govern the conduct of your meetings. Now, you know, in my opinion, in my opinion, it's under Roberts' rules, if it's impossible to undo, if an action's impossible to undo, then a motion to rescind would be out of order. So I don't think necessarily, in my opinion, that undoing the count, continuing the count is impossible to do. An example for me of impossible to undo would be if the board voted to sell a piece of property and went to closing and the property actually conveyed, that would be impossible to undo because you have no, you just have no control over that. I mean, you can't undo it. So others may disagree, but that's my opinion. it. So others may disagree, but that's my opinion according to my interpretation of these rules of procedure.
Okay, we pay you to have an opinion on such matters.
Thank you.
Okay, motion's on floor.
So I have additional comments on it since it was my original motion. At the time, five to two passed this. So I'm not sure what changed in the last month, four weeks since it was done. And I support the sheriff in his opinion. I supported the four and a half employees that the sheriff asked for in his budget. I also supported the sheriff, and I made a motion to that. Now, this board denied that motion to supply those four and a half employees. I also, I believe in the meeting, was the one who asked for the two SROs that would start this year in this coming year's budget. And I also asked for a motion to have two additional SROs supplied for the next four years. So I wasn't, I'm aware the ECC has had a pay raise, as well as the fire department and the deputies. We voted for that. I wasn't aware they needed another pay raise there. So, but if they needed another pay raise, we had $420,000 left over that was put into the courthouse account. I think if somebody else was more aware of that need for ECC to have a pay raise, I think that could have been done. So I'm not against the ECC getting a pay raise. I have a couple of questions here. Digital radio, where are we with that?
And so we are going through the request for proposal process. Last week, a team interviewed potential candidates for completion of that work. So they're working through that now to select a vendor in order to move forward with the project. So it's in the works.
When do you think it'll come before us?
Jennifer, you have any idea where it might come before the board?
I would say it probably wouldn't be until fall.
Fall of this year.
So three months, four months, something like that. So the board has been working on it, or the county has been working on that. So I think that will have a solution. It'll need to be constructed, but it's going to get a solution. Where are we with vehicles? Do we have a way to replace vehicles at the sheriff's office? And how do we do that?
Typically, we replace vehicles every year. It depends on the number that meet the criteria for replacement, but we have been replacing vehicles every year going forward. Sheriff's Office, you know, gets probably, you know, 10 to 15 vehicles a year. So depending on the criteria, we have had, just in all honesty, some problems getting vehicles because of the pandemic. So we are starting to see them come in, but it's, you know, they're approved, but we haven't received them as such. But also with that, once we get it in, we have to get the radios put in them and so forth, and that sometimes puts some delay on it. But we are working through the vehicle process.
So we're having some trouble replacing vehicles because of shortages that everybody has getting vehicles, right? Okay. So the sheriff asked for four and a half employees. One was a training officer there. This board voted that down. I'm all for those four and a half employees that I saw in his budget there. So all jurisdictions around the state are having problems with mental health, deputies being tied up at emergency rooms. I think this last week, 12 deputies were tied up at Virginia Beach emergency rooms. It's a big problem there. This is going to have to be something that's fixed at the Richmond level, not at the county level there. But we do need more deputies. If we need more deputies, like the four and a half you proposed, I think we should support that. So, you know, I'm not against giving wage increases to our public safety. Public safety is one of our main things here that we need to support. And if it's going to take wage increases for the ECC to create a stable work situation there so we don't lose it to nearby localities, I think that's going to be important. I think that may be more important than the $420,000 that we put into the courthouse account there. So I think we can probably take some of that money that we had in the courthouse account and use it for wages coming up there. So I also want to ask if people in the audience who are in favor of the public safety and body cameras, would you mind standing up? So it's not a gimmick. There's both parties that are represented here. So I think it's not just Democrats, not just Republicans, it's both parties that represent here. So how much has already been donated to the public donation account? Do we know?
I'm not going to be exact with this number. However, there's been three donations, one in the amount of $200, the other in the amount of $150, and a third in the amount of around $4,400. Three separate donations.
So I was one of those donations, $200 there. I think somebody at the last meeting tried to donate $6,300, which was refused by the board and directed to the county treasurer, but the county treasurer refused to take the cash donation to the account. So, you know. So I think several distractions from this debate, I think this board favors getting, I would hope so, getting the digital radio system, getting vehicles that he needs when they're available. I would hope that we would have wages increase for sheriffs, fire, ECC that would help stabilize their employment. I'm not against any of those things, and nobody should ever think that I'm against those things. So I have voted for the four and a half employees. I've voted for SROs being phased in. I think maybe we should make our SROs a little bit faster now in light of Uvalde here. So so we did vote a pay raise earlier this year for ECC, fire and rescue, and for our deputies. That brought them up to parity. Now, we have inflation, so we're losing, we're getting behind because of inflation. I think the sheriff made a good case also for having public funding of cameras. You know, these are expensive. This would take burden off the taxpayers for the initial purchase of them. And we all got an email today that had 200 people on a petition for cameras. I have more information about 136 other people who, and, you know, I know these are Republicans, I know some of them are Democrats on here. They're not, they're both. So that's 336 people who've, you know, signed a petition who want to have these cameras. So, you know, it's a large number of people who want them here. You know, our deputies are at risk of accusations. Newspaper locally did publish a lot of stuff that was false, and our deputies are dealing with losing their livelihood and reputation based on a false accusation. That's where cameras are useful for our deputies there. The sheriff has complained publicly of false accusations, like he did tonight, and understandably, we don't want to have our sheriff deputies have to go through the trauma of these false accusations. When I talk to deputies that are currently employed, as well as police that are in Stanton and Waynesboro, they have been in favor of having it. The ones that have cameras in Stanton, Waynesboro, though they may have had doubts at the beginning, they have been very much in favor of having the cameras because it's gotten them out of trouble when they've been falsely accused. I think our police chief in Stanton and Waynesboro, both are very highly supportive of these cameras because of the transparency. Cameras will provide that transparency that everyone in authority in our government needs and will exonerate the innocent on both sides of the camera there. So this is not a game. This is not a, I'm against deputies, I'm against the law enforcement. Certainly not. I'm here to solve our problems, and if we need to raise wages, we need to create stability in the ECC. If we need to hire deputies, if we need to hire the four and a half employees that he asked for in our budget, I'm for all those things. And I've tried fulfilling the sheriff's desire for the county to pay for body cameras that he's so eloquently stated in his Facebook pages last year. So every motion that I've made for advancing body worn cameras would not have cost the county any money in taxes, and I think that's important there. Even way back to the July 28th, 21 motion for the ad hoc committee, I think it was Jeff Slavin who said that, it was Scott Klein there. I never mentioned Scott Klein, so I think it was Jeff Slavin who mentioned Scott Klein. I had in mind somebody up in Harrisonburg.
I ask you a simple question.
Harrisonburg.
I didn't mention Scott. I didn't say you were. I just asked him because I knew you had a background in that, and I simply asked him a straight-up question. To this day, I ain't got a straight-up answer. Okay? So let's get that real clear.
So there was a gentleman.
You hear me?
There was a gentleman.
Hey, hey.
Call to order.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, point of order. Then I apologize because that was not the person that I had in mind for the ad hoc committee. So then I'm not sure where that comment about Scott Klein being on the committee, I'm not sure where that came from then. So three or four months ago, I made motions to hear our public, to advertise public hearings for our body cameras. And consistently, twice, five members of the board voted against that. That wouldn't have cost us any money. We still advertise that anyways. All four of the motions that passed during the meeting four weeks ago do not cost the county any money, and it shows I have listened to other supervisors' objections to having body cameras. I feel that those motions should have been unanimous because they don't cost us any money. They support our deputies. They support public safety. Your vote against these no-cost motions, including the public hearing, says you don't support body cameras for the deputies. Your vote against the sheriff's budget to request the four and a half employees and the two additional SROs for our schools for each of the next four years says you don't support our public safety. The motion for public funding passed five to two. What's the difference here? This allows people, both on Republican side, independent side, Democrat side, to donate. And you have members here that are on every side that are ready to, you know, deposit money into this account, and a lot of money. And I don't think that's a bad idea for our taxpayers. Money that is freely given to this account is a lot better than using the power to tax, the power to put in jail to tax our citizens, our residents here in Augusta County, when we can use freely given money there. So I'm not sure why, I think the sheriff made a good case for public funding rather than against public funding there. We saw that last meeting, $6,300 was raised by a group of people. I think getting them to raise the money instead of protesting is a better use of their talents. Instead of using their energy to protest, they can help the county purchase these cameras. And there's a lot of other people who want to do it, too. They did that in one week. You know, so a lot of money can be raised. I have had people in groups promising donations, too, to this public funding account. And I don't think we should say no just because you're a Democrat, just because you're a protester, to have, to allow a person to donate there. Some people on the board have not heard from residents who want to equip. So we've heard from 200 people on our email today that came in, 200 people who want it, and I have the other 136 people. I reiterate that multiple nationwide polls, and I don't think Augusta County is any different than that, but multiple nationwide polls have demonstrated 85% or above desire among Democrats, Republicans, independents, and different races, ethnicities, and even 66% of law enforcement want to have these cameras because they help the law enforcement. They help them with evidence gathering, help them with false accusations, and none of our deputies need to endure the problems with false accusations. The sheriff deputy mentioned quite a few, you know, and those occurrences where they were falsely accused, if they had a camera on, there would be no question, there wouldn't be any opportunity for a local newspaper to falsely accuse the deputies. They would have been cleared up by those cameras. So I have yet to come across, besides some people here in the room, I have yet to come across people who've been against the cameras. That's why I asked the board to put on the county's Zen City Internet Survey so we can better learn what the public's overwhelming desire is for body worn cameras. You know, police chiefs in our jurisdictions and around Augusta County have expressed their support. So we have Rockingham, who's getting them, Nelson County, Albemarle County, Pennsylvania County, Bedford. We have all Shenandoah, and of course, our cities, Harrisonburg, Stanton, Waynesboro, Charlottesville, who also, and Buna Vista, you know, even the little place, Buna Vista has body cameras there. So one board member said that the cameras would cost $1.5 million per year, but even the sheriff, when he presented the cost of cameras, said that they would be roughly $600,000 per year, five million over, sorry, three million over five years there. So that's why I asked for the county administrator to figure out how much other jurisdictions around us that are same size population or same size and area, square miles, that they find out how much they're spending. Now, we have a county that's 20 square miles larger than we are nearby, Pennsylvania. I'm not sure how many sheriffs, they have a little bit less in the way of population. I think it's around 55,000, so maybe two-thirds, 70% of the population that we have, but they deal with the same area that we have, and they have body worn cameras there. One motion, I asked the county administrator to check on private state and federal grants to help jurisdictions purchase them. That's widely done. All these jurisdictions I've been looking at have had these funds come in. So I think a vote to rescind the motion is a vote against our law enforcement. It's a vote against our public safety. It's a vote against our transparency. And you can't say you're for body cameras and vote to rescind because that is logically incoherent. If you are for body worn cameras, you should seek out any funding of the cameras that will reduce the tax burden to our residents. And the public donation account has already powerfully, in its infancy, united groups of different backgrounds who support body worn cameras for our deputies. Your vote to rescind is a vote against body worn cameras and public safety and against improving transparency and public confidence in our law enforcement. And I would encourage you to vote against this rescinding because of that there. I think the sheriff made excellent points, and I think those excellent points also point to our need for body worn cameras and also support our need to have public funding to assist the taxpayers in starting this. And I'm not against any of what the sheriff has asked for as far as improving the wages for ECC. And I hope we can have a time period when maybe we can take that $420,000 and give our ECC a pay raise, supply more SROs for our schools in light of Uvalde. We certainly are on our way to finding digital radio vehicles. We've already given wages. And, you know, maybe we can reverse our decision of a couple of months ago when we decide not to give our sheriff more deputies there. So I think he's under a lot of stress, and we need to support him.
Mr. Chairman, Sheriff's Department has, how many employees did you say you had, Donny? 92. Mr. Dr. Seaton, you say you support the Sheriff's Department. Do you trust them?
Yeah, so this is not a point with me, I trust them.
No, you don't trust them because if you're saying you've got to put a camera on each one of them to verify what they come and say, you don't trust them. Those people there are here to protect us. They have took an oath, uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the County of Augusta. I trust those people with my life. No, let's don't go to the race issue. I'll trust the African Americans to protect me, any of those ones that Donnie had on there, I'll expect those to protect me just as well as anybody else. Now, if you don't trust those people back there, you're pretty much saying you don't trust nobody in this county. Those are employees of the county, their kids go to school here, they pay taxes here, most all of them was born and raised here. Those people support this county. And if you don't trust all of those employees, then you pretty much can say you don't trust no employees in this building. For a moment.
Sorry, he asked a question, so I didn't get a chance to answer the question. So yes, do I trust the sheriff's? Yeah, I trust the sheriff's deputies. I've not had any bad interactions with the sheriff's deputies. I also trust what the Stanton Police Chief has said, and also the police officers that are in Waynesboro, and police officers that are in Waynesboro and Stanton who already have body cameras and have expressed to me how they really appreciate having the cameras. That has improved their evidence gathering, it has improved getting out of trouble when there are false accusations. And we know there are people who want to accuse the deputies of. So we also have a camera in our room, in our room right now, and it's shining on us right now. And that's to improve transparency. So cameras are a low cost item, really, that improve transparency there and would support our deputies. You know, the deputies are again, one false accusation away from losing their livelihood. And cameras will provide that security that will, that would have solved the problems with the two shootings last year, solved the problem with the dog being shot multiple years ago, solved many problems. The cameras would have solved those problems. I'm not against, and I trust what the deputies say. And, you know, certainly all the things that the sheriff has mentioned that we need to be supporting. I support all those. And I have supported multiple items on his list this year already. But I also support that security that cameras provide for the deputies and for the people on the other side of the camera.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask the sheriff something? Ms. Donald, I know we have had beaucoup conversations about body cameras. Have everybody on this board reached out to you about body cameras, how important it is? Because I think it's hard that we reach out to the vendor, reach out to Stanton, but we want to take the time to reach out to our sheriff.
May I reply to that?
Was I talking to you?
I did, so I think the implication was that I haven't. I did send an email yesterday to the sheriff just to invite him tonight to make sure we were still clear that he still wants to have the body cameras. And to, so, yes, I did voice him. The last two meetings of Public Safety Committee, he wasn't there. We had one yesterday, I was hoping he would be there so I could discuss it with him. The one before, I was hoping he'd be there too. So, no, I have not called him, but I was hoping I would get him at the Public Safety Committee meetings.
I'll just have a few comments, and I'm going to try to make this real simple. From the get go, nobody is, that I've heard, has said they're totally against body cameras. This board opened a fund, and I voted for it, but tonight I'm going to vote to close it for a very simple reason. Money started coming into that fund before this board ever sat down and established guidelines, and we still haven't established guidelines. And subsequent to that, a GoFundMe page was started to serve the same purpose, to collect money for body cameras. So in order for simplicity, why should we have two funds going at the same time? To me, that causes confusion. So I'm going to vote tonight to close the county fund. And I hope the GoFundMe page is successful. All they've got to do is collect the money, open a bank account, put it in a bank account, account for it. And when they collect the hundreds of thousands of dollars that I hope you collect, then you can approach the sheriff and ask him if he'll accept it.
First of all, I'd like to thank the sheriff for coming in tonight and clarifying, that seems to be my favorite word lately. But clarifying, and I think you did a great job explaining some things that were misinterpreted by some of the members on this board, I hope. I think that we have, in my opinion, that we have tried to support you greatly, particularly this past year. And I'm taking it, you agree with that, I see you shaking your head. I don't see it being either or. You know, so many of these things we're working on simultaneously. I mean, the ECC, the SROs, the radio system, the vehicles, the wages. We're working on these things all at the same time. So it's not like we're picking and choosing. You know, when we started out with trying to figure out how, in my, this is in my mind how it worked, that we were trying to figure out, when you, you know, when you came back to us with your recommendation for us to be ready to respond and not have to wait another budget year. That was my thinking. Because I don't want you to have to wait. And I realize that in the past, things were cut after you had asked for them. And I didn't want to see that happen again, if there was anything we could do to make sure things were in place. I don't know, I really don't know why there's so much argument going over an account that can house funding. That's what I don't understand. And we talk about, you know, I understand from some of the board members that, you know, we need to close this account. Well, and I disagree with our attorney when I read Robert's Rules and the research that I've done on it, that we cannot rescind that motion. There's other ways to deal with it, but rescinding it is not the proper way. According to Robert's Rules. And I think that body cams or cameras or whatever is getting in the way of other work that we need to do. It's, as you can tell from the outburst tonight, it's just not, I'm sad that that's happening. And we do want to support you, and I hope you know that. I hope that the folks here from the sheriff's office know that, because that's what's important.
I have a second. I'm going to do a second. I'm going to take a second. Scott, I didn't mean to yell at you, it's loud, but Scott back here, you understood what I said about your experience with the radios and why I would have asked that question? That's all I did, that's right. One that clarified, but it seemed instead of being clarified, wished to just move on. But that's fine, as long as you and I, you understood what I meant. Second of all, second, yeah.
I will make sure I understand, you were trying to say that all of the people...
No, I asked because you have a background in that, and I know you and Scott are friends, so I asked the question. I think it would be a common question. That's all I did. Okay, I didn't acknowledge anything, okay. Second of all, I've been thinking about this a lot, particularly in the last couple of weeks, the last couple of days. I think what gets lost here is the sheriff, whether it's Sheriff Smith, sheriffs before him, or sheriffs that'll come behind him, or elected by the people. He didn't work for this board. We helped fund him and his needs because of the needs of the people of the county. I hope we do not ever reach a point that this board can control our law enforcement branch in Augusta County. That is not where we want to go. Therefore, whatever direction, both in protocol and policy, that comes out of Augusta County Sheriff's Office, comes from the elected official of sheriff, that position. And using us as a board to try to cast or implement a program to him that is not important to him right now, or is not part of his list of priorities, we don't have a right to do that. If people in this county want to give something to benefit the Sheriff's Department, I mean, for heaven's sakes, go to the sheriff. The Sheriff's Department is not this board. There are volunteer fire companies in this county that have been built over community support, but they didn't come here and start a fund. They went to them, found some common ground, worked together, and built volunteer fire companies in this county. Wasn't dictated to them by the Board of Supervisors. And I think we are in a dangerous spot to think that we can take an issue like this and somehow either be in favor of it or push it over on an elected official that was put in that position by the citizens of the county, not this board. And we better be careful of that.
Mr. Chairman, the motion that was made, I don't think is proper also because it's wider than what was advertised in the Order of Business too. Can we have, can we repeat the motion? So while he's searching for it, let me just take a second too here. So we're having a meeting hopefully later this fall where we have priorities. I think all the priorities that the sheriff has made tonight, including body cameras, because I didn't hear him say he didn't want to have body cameras, can be put on those priorities for our meeting later this fall, or August, September. So I think the sheriff's priorities for ECC, the fire priorities, I think should all be on the table there. And I think having these public funding already available for body cameras is going to be very important. We can see how well the people in Augusta County support this.
Hold on, I'll send this to you. I just sent this to you, Timmy, I just, until state mandate, I just sent it to you.
Okay, it says, "I make a motion to rescind the vote taken at our board meeting establishing a budget account and to accept donations for the purchase of body cameras for the sheriff's office."
And then I said, "Tell state mandates it."
Until the state mandates.
So that last phrase is, what extends it beyond what's put into the Order of Business?
Pull, take it off, take that last statement off.
Okay.
Dr. Seaton, I've been very patient with you on a particular subject. You keep referring what votes mean. What does it mean when you vote against a budget, but you say you support the sheriff's office? You didn't vote to pay anybody in this county, nobody, not a cent.
I voted, so I asked for the four and a half employees of the sheriff. I did not get that. I think I wanted to see us use that $420,000 that was left over because of the 10 cent increase in taxes last year. I wanted that $420,000 to go to the sheriff to pay for those four and a half employees. And I also wanted us to direct our future year's budgets for the next four years to supply two more SROs there. I think a budget that doesn't have the support for the sheriff for public safety and didn't have the support for our superintendent and the sheriff for the SROs in our schools is what I voted against. And that's, and because it didn't have those two things, I voted against it.
I believe I remember Mr. Wells begging you to separate your motion so he could support you for the SROs. Made it very clear, that could have passed that night if you made that choice.
Mr. Chairman, you asked me if I did that. Yes, I did.
Okay. So I'm tired of hearing about how you wanted the four SROs. The votes were here that night, but you would not separate it. Go back and review the tape, you're big on that, go review the tape and see why that didn't happen. Now, I would simply say, voting against a total budget to fund everybody because there was one thing you didn't get. I've never voted for a budget in my life I agreed with everything yet. Nobody does, would be like the federal government, we just wouldn't have one. It's, Mr. Piles and I are great friends, but I assure you, he's voted for budgets, he didn't agree with everything yet. It's not possible. But you roll it all up and you say, "It's time." And to keep saying you supported more SROs, and we're going to be dealing with that. But that, we could have had those long before we had this horrible reminder from Texas. This horrible reminder, we will be revisiting that subject. But the fact is, you could have had them, and you chose not to. So stop saying that's why you didn't vote for the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
Question's been called for.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
We've talked about this before. Yes. I believe when we were talking about the budget and it was being discussed, one of the members called for the question and cut and ceased any further discussion about the SROs. At least that's what it appeared in the recording. So to say that there wasn't any, I forget the wording that you used, I'm trying to think of the exact, but that's why there wasn't any further discussion. So let's, let's be clear about that.
I'm quite clear, he asked him twice to break that motion down so he could support the school resource officers, and the votes were here that night to do it. We'll get there, we should have been there.
So anybody could have made that motion to, after the original vote where it combined both, anybody could have made a motion to separate and put the SROs. Because there's no expense with SRO. Those were just for the misty in our budget office to go ahead and put those in the budget for the next four years. Not for this coming year, but for the next four years. So there's no money in this year's budget that would have caused. So I'm not sure why anybody could have not have. I didn't think of doing it, I thought when both sides said they didn't want to have one or the other, it was a done deal because it was five to two against having the SROs and having the four and a half employees by the sheriff. half employees by the sheriff. If you're saying that the four and a half employees of the sheriff would have gotten a no vote, I voted for those four and a half employees for the sheriff. So, you know, that would have cost us some money. But I did vote for those four and a half employees there.
You voted against all the employees, that's the record. But we will get a chance for the SROs again soon, I feel sure. Question's been called for. Everybody clear on the question?
Vote.
Vote.
Let me just clarify, are we voting on the call, or are we voting on the motion?
Motion to rescind.
Would you ask a question?
I don't have to. Our policy is as we generally do. If you want a rule to position the chair, you just go right ahead. We'll vote.
I have no objection to vote on the rescinding.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go on record to say that the motion, the vote that was just taken, the motion was not a proper motion. And that's why I abstain, because I will not vote on an improper motion.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald, based on that motion...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, based on that motion, B, C, and D are no longer valid questions, in my opinion. So unless the board wants to address those, I think we can move to the next.
Mr. Chairman, there was a motion yesterday to rescind the rule that was made at the last meeting. And I believe you said you were putting it on the agenda, the Order of Business here, and I don't see it there.
Excuse me about that. Sorry, Scott. Can you help me out with that? Because I was, I wasn't real clear about what you wanted to rescind. And forgive me, because I'm not saying, I'm being a smart, I just wasn't sure.
Sure, so the rule was made at the last meeting that any motion that's made during a meeting has to be heard at the next meeting. So you have to put it on the Order of Business there. And there was agreed upon that you could get around that rule with a two-thirds vote, because that's how one item of business was passed that refused the $6,300, or directed the chairman to direct the treasurer not accept, to accept or not accept money for this account there. So, so there's that rule that you need to hear all motions in the following motion, in the following meeting there. And I recommend that we rescind that motion, because it would tie up business here.
Mr. Chairman, under Roberts' Rules of Order, they were on the losing side, so they cannot bring it back up.
If you look on page 307, you'll see that reconsidering a motion is what requires the losing side. Rescinding a motion, which is on page 307, can be done by anybody on the board.
Okay, you asked the question why it wasn't on the agenda. He believed you were going to bring it up as Madison's board. So that's why he doesn't have it on the agenda. So you have a right to bring it up when we get to you. Okay. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a number of people sign up to speak, matters of the public.
We got a number of people signed up tonight. The first one I'll call up is Andrea Jackson.
My name's Andrea Jackson, and I'm from Waynesboro. I have two comments. One is from somebody who couldn't be here, I'll be reading it. It says, "My name is Nicholas Patler, and I live in Waynesboro, Virginia. I wanted to stress my support for the body dash cams. As a community, all of us citizens, law enforcement leaders should strive for accountability and transparency. Body dash cams offer accountability and transparency that protects both law enforcement and citizens. It ensures transparency, which studies seem to confirm. In a large, in a larger sense, as a representative democracy, which each of you board members who give your time to serve our community knows, as well as anyone, we should welcome and support the opportunity to be as transparent as possible at all levels of power. The integrity of our system of government depends on it, even though it is lacking in many areas. Transparency and law enforcement is one of, is, and law enforcement is one area where I believe we can create better transparency that will ensure the safety of everyone involved and foster more trust. Resistant to this technology of transparency, which many of, many of the field that we have been seeing here contributes to the distrust and suspicion, both with our leaders in law enforcement. As you know, communities all over the nation have already implemented body dash cams and have body dash cams, and they appear to be contributing to better policing and relationships between law enforcement and citizens. It is time that Augusta County, Virginia moves forward as a responsive and progressive community in this regard, and that I think many of us would like to be." I just wanted to say, I was very, I heard what the sheriff said, I was very triggered, you know, to a point, because I feel as though, being a public servant, first of all, I was shocked and appalled at the behavior and all of this. Because once you win an election, it doesn't matter what party you ran. You represent every citizen in this county, whatever their ideology is. And also, as a sheriff, no matter what, your biases should not be in account. And clearly, the sheriff had biases. Now, for me, as a person, I felt offended, because you know what? Whatever drama that's going on between the sheriff and Nexus, that's not what I'm about. I'm here as a concerned citizen from Waynesboro. And I'm not going to have someone tell me what I care about, what my concerns are as a citizen. Because my, I had a college friend, and what I'm saying, who was an undercover detective, and who was killed in friendly fire. So just because someone says that they want accountability, or body cameras, or when they say that these things protect policemen as well, this is true. And I'm offended when the sheriff has an issue when he says black lives. My life matters. That's not just like, you know, protests, or this, or that. That, my life matters, people's lives matter. And I have an issue with him coming up here and saying this on a very clearly biased level. And I support, I'm a person who supports higher wages for police officers, for, for public safety. I'm a veteran, a combat veteran. So I know what it means to put my life on the line, and to go and may not come back. So how dare you say how we feel, because we don't look like you, or we might have a different ideology. Some things are just basic. As citizens, we all want to be safe, we all want to be properly taken care of. And so I have an issue when people are coming up here and saying, "Well, you don't trust the police." No, I don't trust the police. Sir, have you seen the news? The police have lied when there are cameras. So 100% last year, when I saw that stuff, I said, "I don't believe the cops account 100%. Don't believe it." Because if the police will lie, if there is a camera, they gonna lie. I don't know what's going on in Augusta County. Now, wherever your treasure is, that's where your heart is. Now, I got a problem when people, especially Republicans, conservatives, or whatever, all the time say they want to support the police, they want to do this, but they don't want to put the money where their mouth is. This is, don't have to be either or. Y'all ran to be Board of Supervisors to run a budget. Now, if you don't got the money, that's where you figure it out. So you can have body cameras, as well as the money to have, for this man to run a decent and safe department. And it don't have to be this drama. It don't. Like, this, like, for me, as a person, who, like, I'm a history major, I've been, like, volunteered in politics, this is the most, one of the most dysfunctional meetings I've ever had. And to not respect Roberts' rules, and to just think that you can go and do whatever, and then for the lawyer not even to know what's going on, I'm just, what? Like, you guys aren't even going to stand up when you know that this ain't right? Now, the proper thing would have been is that, of course, it can be terminated, you can't rescind it, you can't take it back, but you could have came and brought another motion, and been like, "We gonna terminate it." But my question is, is that, oh, okay, you like, "Well, it's money in there, but, you know, we haven't gotten the guidelines." Well, whose fault was it to set up the account and let the treasurer let the money in? That ain't nobody but Augusta County, whoever working there. And then this is the problem, I'm gonna sit down, that y'all gotta think about, because y'all got a problem every time race, or this, or that is brought up. But y'all looking real crazy, because you didn't vote it five to two, now all of a sudden, it's not, I don't want that, I don't want that money. You make your own self look guilty. And the simple fact that you're crowdsourcing for safety equipment is appalling. You don't crowdsource for guns. How dare you try to crowdsource for body cameras, or whatever? This should be a priority for your budget next year. And then, then the poor man says the best, mental health is Augusta County. You should be doing your job to be lobbying, general simile, a roly, and hanger to get more money for mental health. If that's the issue, you know what I'm saying? Then do that. But what's going on here is absolutely crazy. And I, I just, I don't live here, y'all, if y'all want that, oh, man, y'all sheriff, y'all go here. But I'm gonna tell you as a fact, as a person, that was triggering. That was appalling. And y'all need body cameras, because I do not trust, sir, I don't trust them at all. Not, I, no, not in there one of them.
Next speaker I have is Dave Zimmerman.
My name is Dave Zimmerman, I live at 120 Lee Highway, Verona, Virginia. I don't want to kill a dead horse, Dr. Seaton, but you're like a cow, gives a good bucket of milk, and then kicks it right over. You know? Thank you for allowing me to speak at tonight's board meeting. My name is Dave Zimmerman. As I said, tonight, I'd like to follow up on some information regarding the tax situation I was speaking at to you about last time I was here. I asked the treasurer's office to give me information regarding five more of the businesses located in 113 Mill Place, owned by Richard Moore and Michael Donovan, individually and jointly. In the, in this report from the treasurer, they themselves owe the county $18,459.25. The county website is updated once a month, according to the office, and there, there maybe have been additions or subtractions since I got this information from them. Nexus Properties, $16,342, they owe the county. This is from the website. Homes by Nexus, $54.94. Nexus Services of Virginia, $85,418.60. One Fish Two Fish LLC, $17,672.70. Nexus Commercial Ventures, $21,160. This is from the website. The reason I bring this to you tonight is pretty much the same as last time. I'm tired that the old people and poor people in Augusta County are being called out for back taxes. Why is that? Why are these companies that owe about $159,106 allowed to operate? They can't have a business license because they owe back taxes. If they don't have a business license, then they are operating illegally. Why is that? Donovan brings kids in, from all over the country, giving them... Donovan brings in kids from all over the country, giving them a free cell phone, rental car, place to stay, and pays for their lawyer and fines, and he can't pay his taxes? Donovan placed our neighborhood under siege, as you, I've said many times, and we had to listen to their whining, cussing, name-calling for months. And he gets a free ride on his taxes? Is that how it works? I am asking you, as a citizen of Augusta County, if these people don't pay, don't want to pay their taxes, shut them down. I believe that you have a right to shut them down. Instruct the county attorney to do that. Very simple. And one last thing, Dr. Seaton, when you asked all these wonderful people to stand up, that were in favor of body cams, everybody wants body cams, but you should have said, "How many people that are paid by, or donated to by Nexus?" Then you would have gotten the same amount, I'm pretty sure. There may have been one or two different.
Ask her right now.
I beg your pardon?
I'm not paid by Nexus.
But that's the bottom line, sir. You need to, you need to stop all the Nexus-loving that you do, okay? Start looking out for the citizens of your district, in Wayne District, okay? Augusta County, not 113 Mill Place, okay? Please. Thank you.
Yeah, next speaker I have is Bonnie Chapman.
Hello, how are you guys doing tonight? It's been an interesting meeting. My name is Bonnie Chapman. My friend Cameron asked me to speak for him. He is African-American, and he isn't allowed in the hall right now, so therefore, he asked me to share this for him. Before I get to Cameron's message, I'd like to acknowledge what the sheriff said. Although body cams isn't his first priority, the public has donated to get body cams. He mentioned an incidence where officers were overpowered. Body cams would easily identify those individuals who did that, and no one should be overpowering officers, that's ridiculous. Thankfully, the public cares enough about this. Um, thankfully, the public cares enough about this actually be doing something. He said that this is a taxpayer issue, but taxpayers are donating their hard-earned money to this account. This doesn't take away money from wages, radio systems, additional deputies, vehicles or ECC. This board talks about the issue often because we, the people, care. Um, s- and so should the board. We, the people, will be the ones voting you out of your chairs, yeah, you're sitting in now. Tonight's meeting has shown the true colors of everyone on this board. Your actions have spoken loud and clear. I'm disappointed but not surprised at the lack of composure and the unity on this board. With that being said, here's Cameron's message. My friends and I were excited that we had the positive, sorry, we had the positive outlook to focus our attention and, and efforts related to acquiring police-worn body cameras for the Augusta County Sheriff's Office. We would all rather raise money to help the sheriff's office to pay for body cams rather than protest in Verona. However, without cameras, we remain committed to standing against police violence and misconduct. If protest is the only way to make our voices heard, then so be it. Let it not be said that we didn't come to the table ready to work collaborative for a community solution. We brought you almost seven thousand dollars that we raised in less than a week. You directed us to give it to the treasurer and then immediately passed a resolution directing him to not take the donations. Honestly, I'm a ni- I'm nineteen years old and my younger brother's friends are more mature than this. Unfortunately, I am not willing to fiduciate, uh, to assume a fiduciary duties because you won't do your job. Today, Bonnie Chapman and I, and I attempted to deposit body cam donations with the treasurer. He accepted the checks but would not accept the cash. We're not willing to be responsible for that money and have no interest in the money. For that reason, today, I authorized my attorneys to file a lawsuit against Richard Holmes, the county treasurer, and each of the board of supervisors' members. We have deposited the cash amounts with the court and we ask the court to determine who among should receive the proceeds. One last note, you ladies and gentlemen are the adults. More than that, you are the leaders in this community. Kids need to be able to look up to you. This fiasco and the unprofessionalism, uh, on high display of Mr. Morelli makes it impossible for middle schoolers in Augusta County to look upon this board and be anything but profoundly ashamed. Do better.
Next up is Sam Orlando.
Hi, how is everyone? It's, uh, Samuel Orlando, forty-seven, South Windsong Court, Fishersville. Um, I'm here to, today to talk about what I always talk about, which is body cams. We need them, we're always going to need them. Um, Donald said that he wants body cams. If he really wanted body cams as bad as we did, he would be fighting for them as hard as we are today. We want them to keep everyone protected. If somebody gets shot, it's not gonna be on camera, there's not gonna be any transparency. We're not supposed to just believe what the police say, you know? And, um, we didn't call him racist, we didn't call Donald racist, uh, his deputies did. And we didn't say that he lied to federal agents, a DHS agent did. And, um, it's serious people that say this stuff, and that's why we repeat it, and that's why we gotta try to get it out here, so people know about it. Obviously, he could say it's all lies. A lot of the stuff that he was saying when he was speaking, like, "Oh, they follow our deputies home" and blah, 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 they do that to us. Like, he, he's, he's trying to switch it around on y'all. Like, why would we follow police? What are we gonna do to a police officer? You know, yeah, we would die, we would get shot. We try, we try to stay away from the police. And everywhere I go, it seems like I run into them. Now, I don't know if they're tracking me down to maybe be, be next to us or, you know, just ride around looking at us, but it seems like they're at wherever I'm at, always. So, uh, I just hope that we have body cams soon and, uh, uh, everyone will fight for them as hard as we have been. By the way, uh, we didn't protest outside of his sheriff's office for six months. It was like eighty days. I, I don't think that's six months. It's like three or something like that, yeah. So, um, yeah, there was a lot of lies in his speech. Um, I, I couldn't really talk about all of them because it would take up a lot of your time. I'm sure we all want to get back. It's almost been a three-hour meeting. Uh, we need body cameras. We won't stop fighting until we get them. Please, if, if you guys really want body cams, then it should all be yeses up there. I, I don't understand it. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Next speaker I have is Shonda McGuffin.
Good evening. Um, Shonda McGuffin from Waynesboro. Um, let me first say this, since the gentleman keeps referring to it. Rise is ran by Sharon Fitz and myself. We have asked to sit down with any of you, all of you. We've asked to sit down. We've asked to sit with the sheriff. Um, and if you sit down with us, you will know, nobody controls Sharon Fitz or Shonda McGuffin. Nobody, okay? And if you want to make a, write a check, write it to Rise Foundation. 'Cause see, we out here taking care of kids. I, I don't, I don't have time to have conversations, okay? We don't care what party you with, we don't care where you grew up at. If you want to write a check, you can do it tonight. I'll even give you a link. You can use your card, okay? 'Cause I, I don't have time for all that. I don't have anything against Mr. Smith, 'cause I don't even know him. I just know he the sheriff. And I know, we don't want anybody hurt. The police, someone they're trying, they're having an interaction with, we don't want anybody hurt, black, white or whatever. This is about having safety for them and the people they're interacting with, okay? It's about transparency. All of you all are sitting up here, and if y'all look, you all have something in common. That's just on this board. And you all have sat up here and fought like cats and dogs on this board. Thank God we didn't bring our children down here to see city government and what happens at a board of supervisors' meeting or a city council. And whoever was in the back telling me to go back to Waynesboro, I go wherever I want to go. I talk wherever I want to talk. Anybody who knows me, I talk wherever I want, when I want, on whatever subject I want. I can tell you now, my next initiative is to replace all of you. Y'all want to know what we gonna be doing to replace all of you? Every police department from here to Charlottesville, Nelson, all of them got body and dash cam. You all in here hollering, "We talking about race." Why is it special here in Augusta County? Why is it that y'all are so against the body and dash cam? Why is it? You yelling at somebody back here, yelling at him, you yelling down, he, come on, man. And y'all worried about our affiliation with Nexus and who we talk to and who we take money from? I don't like Donald Trump, but if he wrote me a check, I'm gonna take it. See, look, they disagreeing with me over here. They think it's hilarious. Y'all think I'm, I'm, y'all think I'm joking. I'm, I'm dead serious. If y'all want to write a check, write it to Rise Foundation. We'll send y'all a, a, a receipt with the thing you're sharing at the end of the year for you to file on your taxes, okay? Have, have, have at it.
Oh, and check our website out and our work, 'cause we work hard.
Yeah, we work extremely hard. Matter of fact, we've been with twenty-five kids all day long and came down here and sat down here, and y'all acted worse than all twenty-five of them today.
Next speaker we have is Danny Link.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My mother, who lived to be a hundred years old, taught me at a very young age to respect our elected officials. She especially was a big supporter of the board of supervisors and said many times that these individuals have a hard job and we as citizens should support their decisions and provide them with assistance whenever possible. Now, Dr. Seaton, I'll tell you, you're making it hard for me to do that, some of the things that you, I've witnessed you do, uh, very hard. It's been brought to my attention that my name was mentioned in a work session y'all held yesterday. I'm sure my mom would have been very proud to know that her son was mentioned in a board of supervisors' work session. However, I have a different opinion. Is it, it was in the context that my name being mentioned that concerns me. I still understand it was in connection with my supporting the purchasing, the county purchasing body cameras for our sheriff's department. It is not that I think that this equipment, equipment of this nature is not important. It is just that there are other things that take precedent over an expenditure as large as this and of, of this nature. There are no state or sheriff's department mandates or codes or, or standards that require body cameras on any, um, of our law enforcement. As I said, state police don't even have them. I have spoken at this, to this group on, on this matter at prior meetings, and my opinion was not, and my opinion has not changed. Once again, I will try and make my opinion clear. Sheriff Smith is the chief law enforcement officer of our county. And I think it is his decision, and his decision alone, to decide what, who we should be listening to regarding whether this equipment is necessary or are there other more important needs that he has, which I think he very clearly pointed that out tonight in his talk. It is this body's job to take the advice and weigh it against other county requests, which you have a number of, I'm sure. Uh, and when it was best, just where best needs to be spent with the limited taxpayer funds for other, each, other areas of, of need. As a county taxpayer, it is both, in my opinion, unprofessional and embarrassing that we have a GoFundMe page to pay for equipment for our sheriff's department. I mean, that's just, that's, this is not a Little League softball or baseball team that we're trying to provide uniforms for, um, that you would use a GoFundMe. It's just embarrassing. I don't think Mr. Shaw, Mr. Garber, or Mr. Slaven, being farmers, would appreciate me telling them that they need to buy a hay bine or other, other implement when they really need a baler or a corn planter. The same thing goes true for the sheriff. It is... Body cameras were not even on the top of five of his list tonight. So that tells you where he considers placing of body cameras. He didn't say he didn't want them, but he just said that they're not a very, they're not a very important need for other things that he wants, such as communication equipment. I mean, I, this group talks about how they want to, the safety for the officers, the deputies out there. Well, think about if you're out there in Craigsville. Think if you're out there in Craigsville and you need assistance and you can't get access to the EOC or to another deputy, you're on your own. That's, that's dangerous. I do not support purch- purchasing body cameras at this time. So I hope in the future, when my name is mentioned in one of your work sessions, it's in the, in context of building a new animal shelter, Mr. Fitzgerald, or an animal issue of some type. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Tracy Powers.
Coming up with a smile on my face. What a show. I've probably forgotten most of what I was gonna say, but I'll make up something. Uh, I, I want to hit on these body cameras and this stuff first. I, I mean no disrespect to, uh, my good friend, uh, Dave Shaw. But his prayers started out with, you know, uh, "We pray for our soldiers and we pray for our, our deputies and all that." Which kind of remind me of, it might have been Mr. Garber was walking over his beautiful farm and everything was perfect. The preacher came up to him and said, "Well, you know, Joe, you and the Lord have done a lot with this farm." He said, "Y'all have seen it when the Lord had it by himself." That's a joke. But you gotta have something to go with your faith. It is your job to fund that man. Just like, we always had that argument over schools. And it say, "Well, schools are equally elected, so they get to have money. That's your job." Here's what's happened when you don't do that. You know, he's gonna fail. When I look at northern states and their tax systems, it's because they got a different tax for every unit. You know, you got one for environment, one for the library, one for serfs, one for fire, one for everything else. And that's how they've gone to where if you got a normal house, you might pay fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars. It's better if one body can look at the whole thing, both of your needs and the people's needs, and wisely determine what their needs are. Now, I will tell you, the sheriff's department has been left behind. When I went on the board, we had fourteen firemen. When we left, we had a hundred and five. We did all sorts of things for the volunteers. We transferred a, a loan program to a grant program. We added other grant programs. We added more money to what we were giving the volunteers. We kept doing right by them. But we didn't do much for the sheriff's department. Now, before Mr. Smith, I don't think we had a very good sheriff. We offered, we offered two deputies one time, Mr. Hyschel and I did, for the Western Portland County. He turned them down. He didn't want the board telling him where he might have people. Okay, that's fine. But we have to do better. Here's a problem. How many of you were in, in military service? Thank you, thank you. You learn things there. They all have uniforms. You have to wear a uniform. It's all the same. If you're in Iraq, everybody over there has got full battle rattle. They got all the fancy expensive helmets. They got night vision. They got sand-colored camouflage. They have all that. Every one of them, not the people from Mississippi having a lesser thing than the people from Massachusetts. When we look at this now with law enforcement, we don't have uniforms. You have blue and brown, but you have one group that's all t- filled out. They got everything they need, and you got others who are just trying to get by. You have to look at all of it. You have to take what he asked for very seriously and have a reason for saying no. If you want to find out what kind of job you're doing, go back ten years. Look at what percent of the budget went to you for government facilities and, and the attorney, and how much that has increased percentage-wise to him. Look at what we've done for fire departments and, and volunteers compared to what we've done for him. You have the money. Despite what he said about me being a liar, you have the money to do it all. And you need to go, all these things that are capital projects, you're focused. I looked at what you just spent four and a half million dollars on. Three and a half million dollars for parks and rec in this building. You got more money for the attorney's space in this building. EOC, okay, ECC, fine. But there are more places to spend money in Augusta County than this building. You know, you can't hide the money. It's everything you've got, all these changes. You spent a ton of money on this building. You spent a ton of money on these other things that don't help your citizens. Nothing you did knocked anything off your list of capital projects. The things that you said you were saving money for, you didn't spend it. I had a study done. We needed twenty-one cell, cell towers to make this place a hundred percent sell... We needed 21 cell towers to make this place 100% cell available. We had probably three since then. I had two of them funded. You could have done them all with that money. And if you tell me the federal government thinks it's more important to put more room for a rec department than cell towers where his radios were worth, you're wrong. You don't, you, you don't look at your money well. This is the thing for the reassessment. If I'm not wrong, that's twice what we spent five years ago. More like 800,000. And now it's 1.5. And you say, "Well, that's the best we can do." Do it internally. You know, that's $300,000 a year. You can, you can have an operation do it for less than that. When it comes time, every five years, and you could put it off now. You could rescind that vote and look at doing it in health. And you don't have to do it in five years. I had Mr. Hynger, with the board support, change it to where we have six years in between reassessments. So you'd have time to put it together. Find savings. You bail out 1.5 million like it's, you know, did anyone give the number tonight? Like it's nothing. It's money. You didn't look at it hard enough to see if that's the best you can do. You can do better. Close company 10, you'll save a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. You have plenty of money. And if any one of you don't believe it, sit with me and I'll go over your budget and I'll show you where your money is. And you've got it to do something with it. And you bail. You just, you know, you say, "Well, we can't do it." The problem that you have is you're all reactive. You don't plan ahead, you don't look ahead. You don't, you know, this idea of having a one-issue meeting, well, do you want cameras? Well, that's not the issue. Do you want more deputies? Do you want more things in schools? There are a lot of things. You have to look at all of them. To pick out the one thing you like, so you can get the applause of one group, la di da. 300 people in the line out of 76,000 people, you gotta put it all together. Look at your numbers. Do something different. I'll tell you what I did when I first got on the board. There was, we, our taxes are too low. Well, that's what we heard when we were doing, with people for schools over the Fisherville area. They kept saying, "Our taxes are too low. You should raise our taxes." Okay. I asked the attorney, and Mr. Bencala probably can find a file audit, where he came up with a voluntary tax, a voluntary education tax. Then anybody who wanted their taxes higher, all they had to do was agree to it, put in how much more they wanted to spend, do it, and it went on as long as they owned the property. Okay? Then you had that money coming on and on. This donation deal, where did that come from? The Air Force isn't having yard sales for new bombs. You don't do that. You have, that's your job. You're supposed to fund our protectors. You have to do that. And if you want to know how to do it, let me know. But what I would ask, I would ask Mr. Smith, Sheriff Smith, to give you a list of exactly what he wants, all five of those things with dollars attached to them, and you say, "Yes, sir." And I'll tell you how you can do it. You know, all that money for the cameras and all of that, that can be bonded. You know, that, that's not, not be that much money. You can get it done. And then the operations. You added new taxes issue, which you didn't have any spending for. You'd already passed your spending before you added your taxes. And there's going to be huge amounts of money. Because when you look at your food tax, what you added there, go to McDonald's and find out how much a hamburger is now, and then with your taxes on top of it, it's going to be a lot of money. So just get, you know, get your kumbaya going and say, "How do we do right by people so we're not an embarrassment when we show up for a board meeting?" Okay. That's it. People from the Pastors District still call me to get things done. And I'm going to talk about Augusta Springs now. We built a park out there. I had it built. People said, "Don't build out Augusta Springs, they'll just tear it up." That's not good. It's the poorest district. If you, if you get your tax maps out, census, you'll find out it's the poorest area in the county. So you can do what Mrs. Carter's done and abandon them. There hadn't been another dollar put to that park. Okay? Nothing. It doesn't have nets on its soccer field. It's got grass going up through the walking trails. Why hasn't it been paved by now? We've done that. We had a fell out there. I did a column on it. I quit my column, I'm getting nowhere. Did a column on a fell out in Augusta Springs. He'd been left this home by his mother. He lives in a trailer with his wife, it's kept real nice. He wanted to have a house. His mother left him the house, and the brother was mad. So he complained to the board that he was doing things without permits. And oh, my gosh, he was. An $18,000 house by assessment. He was there fixing it up. And boy, did the county come down on him. You know, John can tell you what all they did. But it didn't fit. He was in the flood plain. If he wanted to put in a septic field, he couldn't because the service authority had a well that, that took him part in group where the septic field would go. Did we help him? No. We told him, "You can't move in it, you can't sell it, and you have to do what we say." The infrastructure accounts that you guys are talking about, they were started for just this sort of thing. We had lots of people in the rural areas that don't have sewer. They don't have things. Those things, the developed systems, to do that. We started with $3,500 a house. If you rate that for, for inflation, you know, it's probably $10,000 now. We could have put in that stuff for him. You could, you could have done variances on it. But because you're a poor person, you don't have any collateral. You don't have anything that people care for. We did a variance on a FEMA project or a flood plain issue for Mr. Byler in the Orlando District. We've done that. We've spent money for people to do water things. But usually, they go to people who have money. We, we got Paul Ball. He got $8,000. We had, what's that guy, PJ? With 35, the realtor. PJ Wright, is that his name? Yeah. We put in like $35,000 for it so he could meet county ordinances. Have you ever been to his house? Go along like a mile of nice fence and a big thing? Very wealthy man, but we had $35,000 to help him. But we haven't had a penny to help Mr. Knight. Monday, he had a stroke. He's in a hospital right now. I can't tell you how many times I talked to him, how upset he was. I want you to go out to Augusta Springs and go by and look at each of the houses. And have with you the commissioner's value of those houses. Most expensive is 75. The least expensive is 2,000. That's a house and a lot, 2,000. My wife, when she was running the rescue, one of her first calls was a stabbing in Augusta Springs. She goes out there, the guy's got a hunting knife in him. He's bleeding all over the place. And his first reaction is, he's mad, he's going to get that guy. Then he just collapsed on the floor. But here's the deal. It was a dirt floor with a rug on it. That's the kind of places there. You have water out front, but you can't take it in because there's no place for it to go once it goes in. In my column, I wrote about how you can fix that. Things that we've done, it could be a great place. We can't let our communities die. Okay? That's out there. Okay. I think I've had enough. I'm just, do right by the sheriff. Do right by the poor people of Augusta Springs. Thank you.
Next up is Sharon Fitz.
A thousand thoughts that have came and gone. This issue, this, this statement about trust that this gentleman right here said, he asked, "Do you trust?" Or if you don't trust, then you don't trust the people and all of this kind of stuff. But you have to be living underneath of a rock to not understand why people don't trust just the word of police officers. Though we respect them and we need them and appreciate them, at the same time, they are human, just like everyone else. And I heard a lot of talk about the, the protection of the police officers and them wanting to go home to their families and all of that. And they, and they should. They should be protected. They have every right to make it home to their families. But what about the people? What about the people who, and I'm going to tell you, I have not gotten in trouble there in my life, but when an officer gets behind me and I've heard somebody say they don't like it, but I don't really care, I'm telling you how I feel. There is a very real reason to be afraid when you think people are afraid of you for no reason. No reason. Just because of rhetoric that just sprues out. Like, you know, are you, it, trust? That, that, that's a, that's a question to ask, and it triggered people. But the reality is, if you pay attention, if you live in today's time, you have every, all you have to do is turn on the TV. And the TV gives you every reason to want there to be some kind of way for the officers to be able to stand in their truth and the people to stand in their truth and the court systems to then have what they need to make a just decision. That's that. The other thing is, the sheriff says that he needs money to pay his officers an increase. That seems like a low brainer to me. I mean, the people are putting their life on the lines. They should get a raise. I mean, that shouldn't even be a question. And, and then he says that he needs more officers. Well, again, I don't see how that could be a problem. But we also have to think about how many people keep moving into areas. So the more people that move in, you need more officers. That's going to be a continuing problem. But the cameras are still needed. For every officer, for every officer that you get, you still need cameras because someone kept talking about officers going out on a call and they're by themselves and they're in the dark and they don't have radios. Well, they, they still need cameras too if they're by themselves. I mean, if there's any question about what happened in the dark or when these officers are by themselves, they're not by themselves if they have a camera. Okay, all right. So then the other thing that really got me here is this gentleman here, your, your, your county attorney. He says, right off the top, that according to Robert's rule, you can't do it. But his opinion is, you can do it. And then someone says, "Well, that's what we pay you for, your opinion." Well, I didn't, I, I, I thought attorneys are supposed to help you understand the law. Just, okay. Okay. Let's see, hold on here. Wow. I, I, I'm, I'm struggling because I don't know how many people have said every place around, surrounding counties, cities have cameras and dash, dash cams. Every place, small, larger, same size. I really, the people keep asking. You said the 70, 76,000 people. Well, if there's some kind of way to get in contact with them, you all should work on that. But for the people who care enough to show up, to respond, to let you know what matters to them, you got Republicans, and Democrats, and independents. You got people who don't like each other that's still standing here on the same side telling you, yes. Now, I also remember a couple of meetings back, because we pretty much hear every time there's a meeting on this. I spoke to one of the deputies, and he said to me, standing right there with his wife, "We all want them." You won't find one officer who says that they don't want body and dash cams. Now, I think I saw him here earlier, but you know, he's probably got tired and went home. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling, I'm struggling, I'm struggling. Because if something happens and there is a suit, a lawsuit, you all keep talking about money. I mean, then you have to come up with that money still. And who's going to pay for that money when you pay that money out? Is it going to be the taxpayers? Okay, I, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying. I'll be finished in a minute. Do you all, I mean, to my understanding, and I thought I heard this, that you all normally follow Robert's rule of order, normally. So do you pick and choose when you can use that? And I thought that you use that when there's no law. Is there a law, a specific law that governs this question about whether or not you can rescind the motion or not? And I'm just wondering, because I mean, if there's no law, then you have to follow Robert's rule of order. And if that's what you normally follow, how then do you decide to not follow it when it doesn't suit your desires, your personal desires? You keep saying you care about the people, but I didn't hear much talk about the people. I heard more talk about, and God knows, I am not saying that the officers do not deserve to be protected and that they, you know, they don't, they shouldn't get what they need. That's not my position. My position is they should have that, and we, the people, should have what we're asking for. And even the ones that's not asking for it, your responsibility is to protect us, even when we're not asking for it. So I got so much more I want to say, but I, I'm, I'm 25 kids all day long.
Next up is Scott Klein.
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Scott Klein. Live in your district now, Browerwood. You guys know me. I didn't come here to speak today, but since my name's been brought up a couple of times, I thought maybe I'd better get up here and, and say a few things. The, bear with me. I do have some issues since COVID. Some of y'all know my personal health issues and everything. And if, if I get confused or start, can't, can't bring my, my thought process out, and we'll have to slow down and regroup. So just bear with me, please. Sheriff Smith, personally, I don't have any problems with you at all as far as, you know, office of the sheriff. I absolutely respect law enforcement. You know what my background is. I'm prior military. I was three years with the military police, working undercover drugs. I came to this area. And did undercover drugs here in this area for approximately eight years. I absolutely support law enforcement, respect law enforcement. When I left my law enforcement career, I dealt with, with thousands, thousands of different law enforcement agencies across this world or across this country in, in three different countries, selling the equipment. The, you know, Sheriff Smith did tell the truth here today. You know, as far as, he never has lied to the judge. And I, and I agree with that statement. That's the statement you made, Sheriff. You never lied to a judge. But what I have said, and what each and every one of you board members, I've, you know, probably spoken with in one single time, is that he lied to a federal agent. That's not my word. That's not the word of Nexus, which I do not agree with 99.9% of the stuff they put out. They go overboard. It doesn't help the issues in this county. And it just, you know, I don't agree with it. But the bottom line is, it's not my word. It's not Nexus's word. There is a sworn affidavit by a federal agent in a court hearing that says that then Deputy Smith only recounted one telephone call of conversation with a suspect who was in custody, and he admitted to one phone call that happened months prior. What Sheriff Smith doesn't tell you guys is that he not only did not tell the agents of the telephone calls that he had received, he had received those calls just two days prior, five days prior, and seven days prior. And I'm pretty sure that's right. Again, some memory issues, I may be a little bit off. So excuse me if I'm wrong. But the bottom line is, you know, and again, you know, if, if something, you know, on down the road happens, something on down the road happens. But I mean, just like the word got back to me this week, Sheriff Smith is, you know,[1770.63] is that supposedly, you know, something's gonna happen to me, and I'm gonna be arrested. Maybe that's why the show forced back here, I don't know. But, you know. The bottom line is, guys, we have checks and balances, okay? Whether, whether we, we, we all wanna believe our law enforcement. And there's no doubt in my mind, what happened in Uvalde, Texas, you know, the men and women standing back here, you know, in the back, as well as Sheriff Smith, they would be the first through the door, they would absolutely protect this county. And, you know, there's no doubt in my mind. I would absolutely stack up with Sheriff Smith if I had to, and was asked to, to go through the door with him. Now, he may put me out front and use me as a shield, but, but there's no doubt in my mind, you know, as far as when, when the rubber meets the road, you know, our men and women in law enforcement here in this county are gonna get the job done. But as far as, you know, body cams and stuff like that, that is just simply a check and balance. He said, hey, Scott Klein, that's why I'm up here talking, said that it would only cost a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Well, you don't have to go for the gold. You know, we all got here in cars, you know, some of us got here in a Prius, some of us got here in a F-250 pickup truck, some of us got here in hundred thousand dollar vehicles, probably. But the bottom line is, we all got here. So, you know, it just depends on what system you wanna get and how you wanna implement it. If you want to implement just body cams, like what Stanton has and Waynesboro has, without the dash cams, those body cams only cost three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Waynesboro, they have fifty-seven body cams that, for their active individuals, with sixty-three total, for a total that costs sixty thousand dollars. You know, give a hundred thousand dollars to the Commonwealth attorney, give, you know, a little bit more to outfit more officers, but if you simply implemented over stages, I don't think it would cost as much money. So, you know, the bottom line is here, and Donald, or Sheriff Smith, you brought up about GPS. Like, there was something evil and wrong that I did as far as dealing with Black Lives Matter. Not only did I tell those young men and women, hey, I do not agree with your speech, I don't agree how you're approaching it, but you, each one of you board members, I mean, I've worked on, you know, each and every one of your own campaigns to get you in office one way or the other. If any of you come to me and ask me for help, I'm gonna help you. And same way, I may not agree with what Black Lives Matter says, but if they say, hey, my signs, my equipment is being stolen on a nightly basis, and I have the ability to do it, and find out who did it, then I'm gonna help them. No different than when I, you know, supported you on your first campaign, Sheriff Smith. Now, you know, everybody in here, including those out there on the internet, probably don't understand that I helped you in your first campaign, I supported you, I was at your victory party up here at the firehouse. What you also, you know, didn't say, is that you were having signs stolen. You came, your father came to me, and we spent one night building the same type of frames, and putting GPS devices in your signs to find out who stole, who was stealing your signs. And I monitored that for free, and unlike Black Lives Matter, I gave that to you in your campaign, and helped you out. So, yeah, again, the body cams and everything else is checks and balances, it's just like Uvalde. Again, we keep on bringing up Uvalde, and I agree, we need the school resource officers. But with Uvalde, when that started to happen, we were told that the school resource officer was on-site, that they engaged the gunman, that they were injured. We were also told that, you know, they stacked up, and they couldn't go into the rooms because they didn't have ballistic shields, or proper equipment. We were also told that the door was locked, and they couldn't access the room for fifty-some minutes. Now, not only based on body cams, and I'm sure everybody at Uvalde, just like everybody here in Augusta County wants to believe in their men and women in uniform. The city council, I'm sure, believed in Uvalde's police department. But now, after the fact, and because of body cams, because of school cameras, we know that the public was not told the entire facts. Now, am I saying that they're lying? No. But in the heat of the moment, maybe things got mixed up. But the video clearly shows that they had two ballistic shields nineteen minutes into that shooting, when they said that they did not. And unlike some of you guys saying that, yes, I agree, Sheriff Smith is an elected official, he runs his department. But you guys, as the board of supervisors, have the obligation to fund things that you think that will not only help his department, and as far as where the money comes from, Sheriff, I mean, that's one thing I do agree with, I mean, you know, it's like, one time I told somebody, they were like, well, why you talk to certain people? And I was like, well, you know what, I'll talk to the devil himself to get the right information. Doesn't mean I'm gonna follow him, doesn't mean I believe him, doesn't mean that I agree with him. But why we don't take money, you know, when it's free money, is beyond me. And one last thing, Sheriff. I am sorry if I missed something in that federal transcript, where you said that you were exonerated, and said that you were not impeached. Maybe my memory is wiped out, because I don't remember that. But please, I mean, you have my email address, email it to me, email it to the board members, where it says in those court documents, that that didn't happen. Now, I can tell you one thing right now, guys. Nobody in law enforcement that I've ever known has ever had their name in a federal indictment, or not, excuse me, not an indictment, but in a federal affidavit, you know, outlining that they were not truthful. So, I've never seen in a court hearing, where it says in the affidavit, a very well-respected attorney in our area stand up and say, you know, after he, I mean, then Deputy Smith testified, that I'm surprised he's not indicted, after hearing, you know, what was told today. Now, all those, all those papers are sitting down there in the federal court, and can be accessed by anybody. And Sheriff, you know, I'm sorry, we may agree that, or disagree on whether you lied or not. But I can tell you one thing, you know, it's, it's, you know, again, I respect you as a sheriff, you know, I respect every single one of your deputies. And I have no doubt, you know, you all will go through the door and do the right thing, if anything ever tragically happened here. But we do need oversight, and one of those oversight things is body cams. Because they don't lie, just like at Uvalde, just like at Uvalde. Initial report said one thing, cameras say something else. It's a checks and balances, guys, thank you.
Next person signed up is Judy DeSetti. Hope I got that right.
Hi, my name is Judy DeSetti, I live at 160 Carrier Lane in Waynesboro. I am a registered nurse, I have been a registered nurse now. Well, I just retired last year, but I still have my professional license, thank goodness. Been a nurse for forty-five years, took care of over sixty thousand patients. I sat down one day and figured it all out, not to mention family members, not to mention their cousins and brothers and sisters, I've worked in ICU, CCU, telemetry, surgery, anywhere but OB-GYN. So that's my little background. Board members, Mr. Smith, citizens of Augusta County. I'm here to speak on behalf of body cameras. I am a strong advocate for body cameras, and I've done extensive investigation, research, talked to Los Angeles Police Department, Chicago Police Department, I've been at this since two thousand and nine. I found out that initially, police officers are not advocates of body cameras, but after using them, they love them. There is an upfront cost, but I have a survey from the Center for Crime and Justice Policy. They did a study, and this is one of many studies, body cameras actually save, per use, four thousand dollars a year, per user. Why? Because there's less court cost, less suits, suing, less time off of the beat, per se, the officers have more time to help the citizens. Also, police officers spend less time on reports. And of course, they'll tell you how much time they spend on the reports after each incident. There is plenty of evidence that it does increase the quality of the policing itself. There's less incarcerations, I don't know what it costs per day for an inmate, but it's, everyone's on their best behavior, everyone has said that. Police officers on their best behavior, citizens are on their best behavior, at all times when they know a camera is running. Cost, of course, you're gonna cost, the upfront cost, and also the server, who's gonna take care of the data, there's policymaking, there's training, et cetera, et cetera. So I went over some things that I'm just gonna throw out there. Tactical equipment, I heard someone on this board saying, well, we need tactical equipment Mr. Smith asked for. Well, how many armors, vehicle armors do we need? You know, Waynesboro, Stanton, you know, Augusta County, maybe can all get together, and maybe have one or two tactical equipment. Also, high-speed chases, I'm sure there's a few of them that's happened in Augusta County, and I'm sure people have heard about a crash, the car, the vehicles are crashed. One police officer, I guess he's no longer on the police force, and you could attest to that recently. There's a vehicle right there, maybe we can increase training for high-speed chases, maybe we can stop high-speed chases. Not only does it, you know, put the citizens in jeopardy, but also the police officers. And I can go on with transparency, it's all been said, it's all been, I'm not just gonna repeat it because it's getting late. But, with all that said, and someone also said about 911, they need a 911 system. Why can't we get together with Waynesboro, Stanton? How many 911 centers do we need in Augusta County? Another way to save money, brainstorm, how about brainstorming, quit pointing fingers, stop. Now, to address Mr. Shaw about trusting police officers, let me tell you a little story about myself. One day, three police officers came to my home looking for my son, and I'll make a long story real short. A police officer had my arm jammed between the front door and a banister. My front banister with the full swing of my front door is eight inches, from here to here is twelve inches, twelve and a half, I've measured many times. I was like this, and he was pushing the door against my arm, and the banister's here. Being a nurse, I know my arm was either gonna give out, but not the door. I was screaming for help. On the witness stand, this police officer said he never knew he was hurting me, he didn't hear me screaming. A body camera would've showed that. Do you know I spent six months in jail? Me, lost my nursing license, yeah. Six months, sitting there, innocent person. You put a price tag on that? My humility, my dignity, my everything was gone. Put a price tag on that, and you're gonna say, every police officer always tells the truth? I'm here to tell you, wrong.
Mad as a board. It's all signed up. Okay.
My name is Sophie Alberts, I am from Barbersville, Virginia. And I wanted to say that I've been listening to this meeting, I have been taking everything in, seeing who says what, what everything means, where, when, what affects what, whatever I can take in. And I wanna say, it's driving me crazy. So, all the accusations, everyone says this agenda's this, this agenda's that, everyone's working for something. Yeah, everybody is working for something, everybody is working for what they think is going to help people. Or, everybody is working for what they believe in, at least. So, why does it matter? Why does it matter how much it costs to protect people's lives? Why does it matter if it'll cost a few hundred thousand dollars to keep the community safe? To keep people together, to keep people safe? Why is that difficult? Why does it matter if you don't agree with RISE, if you don't agree with Black Lives Matter? Why does it matter who you side with in this room? As long as it keeps people here safe, thank you.
Anyone else?
The only thing I have is to invite you all to come out to Churchville this weekend. Starting tonight, we're having, they're having, firemen are having their carnival, and it will run through Saturday, and the parade will be Saturday night. So if you wanna come and enjoy yourself a little bit, have some good food.
I have an appointment to make. Augusta County Service Authority Board, I'd like to reappoint Alan Dulles, sir, as the Beverly Manor representative on the Service Authority Board of Directors.
Yeah, a few things, I think there's, needs some clarification regarding the GoFundMe account. The county doesn't have a GoFundMe account, correct? Okay, so, that GoFundMe account, when one gentleman said that we had a GoFundMe, the county does not have a GoFundMe account, that was developed by somebody private. The reference in our guidelines that are no good anymore, were just to somebody else's GoFundMe page there. So, also, the rule that was developed last meeting is gonna bind us. And I think we should rescind that rule. And I'd like to place on the next meeting, rescinding that rule. So, I totaled up two hundred and six thousand of various Nexus taxes that haven't been So, um, I totaled up two hundred and six thousand, uh, various nexus taxes that haven't been paid. I haven't looked at those. Is that about accurate? Or do we know? And what are we doing to, to obtain those taxes? And where are they as far as, uh, the county attorney, administration? How are we dealing with those taxes?
So, to answer your question, I don't know that that's, that number's correct. I would have to check with our treasurer, uh, and get a report from him that's up to date. And then work with the treasurer as to, uh, what the status of collection is. We can certainly do that and, and report back to you.
And are, are we just, uh, have they gotten letters that they're behind in taxes? Are they behind in taxes multiple years? One year?
There are, there are guidelines that the treasurer has to follow in regards to taxes and timeframes and so forth, so, I'd be glad to talk with the treasurer and get a-
So if we can find out if the, the timeline, timelines are being followed for those taxes.
Yeah, our treasurer will be able to tell us.
That'd be good. Oh, where am I? You know, as far as public safety, again, I think we should be providing for the fire and rescue sheriff deputies, uh, ECC. I don't think that's an issue on my part. Uh, I think we should have a policy of supporting our public safety, uh, there. I do believe, though, uh, it is important that we don't give up our policymaking, uh, that the board has. And, uh, just like Richmond, uh, may set a policy, uh, eventually, just like in seven other states where they've recommended having, um, cameras on their, uh, police departments and sheriff's departments. Seven, uh, seven states, including South Carolina, which is not a, uh, high Democrat state, uh, has these. So I think we should not give up our ability to make policy, uh, there. I think we should put it on, uh, our, uh, agenda for, uh, this next year. For legislative that we, uh, seek state funding for, uh, body worn cameras, uh, there, so. We also, somebody brought up an, an issue about, uh, doing our reassessment internally. We did look at that, so, um, and, and hopefully Butch will confirm this with me. It was substantially more expensive than hiring somebody else outside of, uh, you know, outside of our administration to do it. I think it was like three times more expensive. Yeah, if we went and did it internally. So, uh, we did look at that. So don't let anybody think that we're overspending on the assessments. We got two people, two, uh, companies to bid on it. We did choose one that was a little more expensive, but we feel we'll get the, uh, job done. You know, some people, um, you wanna make sure that we get the ECC and the deputies', uh, um, pay increases. So can we do a pay study again? I know we did one about six or nine months ago. But there's been a lot of inflation recently. I'd like to find out if we can do a pay study, uh, to see where our deputies and ECC are. And see if they need a, a pay raise compared to the jurisdictions that are surrounding us. So that we don't lose them, uh, to the surrounding jurisdictions. Is that something that we need to vote on? Or can we? Thanks. I think that, that would be a good idea if we know where, uh, surrounding communities, uh, are on their pay.
Just one follow-up. The speaker who advocated for an house assessment, Ms. Wetzel, myself, went to Rockingham County and Harrisonburg a number of years ago. I was gung ho on the concept, but there again, the numbers just do not add up. Rockingham County was there. They went out, they don't know if they're gonna stay out. It's just not as simple as saying it's a good idea. The money, the money is substantially different.
Yeah, I think they did it internally, and this last time they did it externally. So they've already tried the internal, and I think we should stick with the, uh, seeking, um, somebody else to do it independent of us. Until there's nobody in the state.
Higher than, and are, and still are.
Yeah.
So that's, that's correct.
Um, I need this on the next, um, calendar unless I could do it tonight. Wilson Volunteer Fire Department and Stewart Scrapp, um, Fire Department both need defibrillators. And they cost, um, eighteen hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents apiece. So that'd be a total of two. Um, I don't know if that needs to go on the next one, or if we could do it now. Next one, that's what I was thinking. Can you stick that on there?
What'd you say the cost was, eighteen what?
Eighteen, eighteen seventy-five. Might be three, I'll call you in the morning about that, okay?
Okay. Yep.
I left my hair and hat at home. I'm done.
I just wanna address that I'm not against body cameras. Y'all may think that. And you're very passionate about what you believe in. And that's justifiable. We're elected and set up here in these seats. It's not the most convenient job, sometimes it has difficulties. But we're elected by our whole district. And sometimes there's two sides to every issue. And we have to make a decision. And everything that we do costs money, we go over the budget and everything. And it's not only in here that we listen to people, we listen to people in the community. When we go down to the coffee shop, when we sit down and eat. People catches us in Walmart and everywhere and talk. It's like the courthouse, it was a contentious issue. And we listen to them. But the bottom line is, sooner or later, we have to vote on something. And we have to vote it up, vote it down. And I have told people before, being in this job is like being Dear Abby. Everybody calls you and gives you something they're very passionate about. And sometimes you have to give them an answer back, and it's not always the one that they wanna hear. And you've heard from Sheriff Smith the things that are needed. But everything that he said costs money. And when it comes to the cost, that means raising the budget, raising taxes. As one of our former board members, he was not a very good advocate of increasing taxes. But he seemed to be in that position tonight. I think they're trying to tell us the lights is going out, it's time to go home. And, and so, you know, we hear you, we understand. And you think we turning a deaf ear on you, but we're not. And once it's put in place, Sheriff Smith is still going through the process and everything here. And once we've got all of the information, we see the cost and things, and then when we do the budget, we have to listen to the people in the county. And if it comes to the budget and, and all of these items that are on there, because just the cost of everyday business, just the salaries increases, insurance increases. We have to go back and answer to our constituents, why did you raise my taxes? I've heard from that, and I tell people, I said, guys, I said, look here. I said, Rockingham is seventy-three cents, or whatever they were. Rockbridge is seventy-four. And they said, well, don't raise my taxes. Mr. Powell's wanting to keep it at fifty-eight cents. We start cutting, that means we're gonna cut, Donnie won't even get what he needs. Schools won't even get what they need. It's a difficult decision, sitting up here and, and, and trying to balance everything. And to try to do what the people put you here in this seat to do. And it was alluded here tonight. And I know they've already left, that we, we put you in this seat, and we can take you out of this seat. That's exactly right. It's the people over here, they will decide whether we sit in this seat or not. And if they feel like we're doing a good job, they will put us back in this seat if we run for election again. So as Mr. Hattie Shell said, when you sit up here in this seat, it's not as easy as you think it is sometimes. And we have to make the difficult decisions. And there's been some controversy about what goes on on this board. Well, to me, I said, when it's in Washington, whether it's in Richmond, or whether it's here. When this board takes a vote, you better learn how to count to four if you wanna do anything. If you can't count to four, and I was told that by some other supervisors before I ever come on the board, in which I knew that because I followed the board's actions and things over the years. It's majority rules. And so when it comes to voting and things, it's majority rules. I've lost on this board before when I voted. I was Lone Ranger on some things. Marshall Patti used to say that he was the only one that was voted no on everything. But we don't always get our way. And so when you, you lose a vote, I don't try to keep going on and on. If you haven't convinced the board to move forward, then, and you take a vote, should be the answer. You move on. So it is difficult decisions, and until you've set up here and do it, you don't know exactly what goes on. We don't have a money tree set note back that we can just go out there and pluck the money off of to pay for everything comes along. We got big-ticket items that we've gotta pay for. We've got a radio system, we got a courthouse. We got a jail up here that's probably gonna need some renovations and everything. Those are big-ticket items. So when we're looking at the budget and things, we have to focus in on all of that. The schools, they have to, we have to look at all of that. Because the school board's not a taxing authority, so they have to depend on us like the sheriff and everybody else. So it's not just one thing that we are focused on taking. If you look, there's a lot of, look at our budget and see what all's in there. And the requirements from the state, what we have to do. So I wish these people would be a little more understanding that you just can't pluck money out of the sky and pay for everything.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. To follow up on what one of our speakers said, could we ask our attorney to look into businesses that are do, are, we know are doing business without their license? And follow up with that? Thank you. Yeah, if they're operating without a license.
I would, I would check with the Commissioner of Revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm with the Board of Supervisors of Augusta County, convening closed session pursuant to item one, the personnel exemption of Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one, paragraph A, sub-paragraph one. Boards and commissions, the youth commission, Ag and Forestal District, Ag Industrial Board, Recycling Broadband Committee, Library Board, Augusta County Service Authority, Valley Community Services Board, Chando Valley Partnership, Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation, and Community Policy Management Team. Paragraph two, the legal counsel exemption of Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one, paragraph A, sub-paragraph nineteen. Item A, school safety security.
Second. Sir?
Did you say that was legal counsel or it's public safety? It's a public safety exemption.
Public safety, public safety security.
It's not, it's not, that's not, yeah, it's not a legal, legal counsel exemption. It's a safety.
As long as you're happy with the right exemption.
Yep, it's the right, it's, 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 uh, it's thirty-seven. Number nineteen.
Number nineteen.
Correct, I just, I thought I heard, I thought I heard legal counsel. If I heard wrong, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that.
It does say it's legal counsel.